Before we actually start the meeting, can I say a few little words? There are people in this world who are doers and then there's other people who say they're gonna do, and we all know people like that. But I'm sitting next to one of the world's biggest doers. And I don't know if all of you know, but this is his last meeting as chairman of the planning board. I know, again, I'll talk to him about it. So if I start crying, just tell me I'm an idiot. But it's very, it's amazing. This man has put in 22 years as a member of the planning board, and most of that, I think, as chairman. And somebody wrote down all these little numbers, and I have to read them because I find them so unbelievable. So 22 years, that's over 1,000 planning board meetings and sidewalks. That's over, I love this one too, and this is separate from the thousands of hour meetings and sidewalks, is over 1,500 hours of hearings. That's just hearings with neighbors and all these other things. So you never really know the impact that this man has had. And we could go on and talk about trees being saved and sites being improved, but mostly he's really helped preserve Weston as Weston. There's a lot of the original Westons still here because of him. We've everything you guys have followed up, Joe's found you amazing, and we know we'll never be able to follow your act. We know your record will never be broken. Isn't that crazy?
I hope.
That's right. And I can call the meeting to order now?
We're replying.
But would you have something to say?
The only thing I'd like to say is that I want to thank all of the people that voted for me, to trust me to do the job of the planning board, and that voted for me again and again. I want to say I am grateful to you. Thank you very much for letting me do this job, and it's been extremely gratifying to do. The only thing I'd like to say is I am so honored to have served with such wonderful colleagues, planning board members, consultants, the best you could ever ask for, the most dedicated people you could ever wish for. And I will always remember all of you and all of the other ones that I've served with in the past, and I'll never forget any of this. Thank you, everyone.
That was the job we signed by Christian Lee.
You're right.
He's always won the crowd.
All right, so do we have any public comments for anyone in the audience on anything that's not on our agenda tonight?
No.
Then we'll go ahead with the first meeting, which is Flexible Subdivision, Lot 121 Church Street, site time review. And who's making the presentation tonight?
I will just kick it off, and then I'll let Rob do his thing, and then Frank will follow up with architectural, and Karen will bring it on in advance. We had a productive meeting last week, I think. Today we'll have some more productive, but I would like to thank our team, I thought it was an excellent brainstorming of ideas, and we tried our best to incorporate some of the angles and bands and some of the other architectural features. So colors and some of the textures are still a bit fluid, but very happy with everything that you can present. So I will turn it over to Rob to walk me through the civil part of it, and then Frank will talk more about the design. So thank you in advance.
Yes, Mr. Lee.
And if you'd like, I'll ask the board, did you want me to start with reviewing kind of what some of the homes are in the neighborhood?
Sure.
Okay.
Look around here.
Yeah, one of my boards did, I was a bit pressed for time. And I've got these few guys to, you know, boards and people have to do. So starting here at 74 Webster Road, and that's a colonial with an RGAFA of a little 100 square feet. And moving down the board, 78 Webster Road is also a colonial, has an RGAFA of about 4,400 square feet. 120 Church Street is there, it's a hip roof, no, that's a cape, has an RGAFA of about 4,500 square feet. 64 Coburn Road is here, which is a hip roof colonial with an RGAFA of about 2500 square feet. 56 Coburn Road is here, and that's a shingle styled home with an RGAFA of 6,700 square 55 Coburn is actually the former Rojo home, and was part of the Flexible subdivision here, and that is, has an RGAFA of about 5,800 square feet. And then 7 Lower Field Road is here, and that's a newer, recently constructed shingle styled home, an RGAFA of about 13,200 square feet.
It's under 10,000. It's my house. Not 13,000.
Yeah, he's trying to go through the presentation.
Okay. Okay.
So I will just start with this layout plan. And I won't go through the history, because I think the planning board certainly is familiar with the history of the permitting they went through with the Flexible subdivision. But I would just say that that house footprint is very consistent with both the location and the size that was worked out through the Flexible subdivision plan. So that's very consistent. Probably the only substantive change between the Flexible plan that we had showed the board and what's here today is the major driveway or garage is on this side of the house for the, what we showed in the Flexible plan. Now, the main garage is over here, and I think that was driven by the architecture to keep that a low structure on that side. And there is a guest parking garage on this side. So that's kind of the major difference in the site plan.
Excuse me, is it possible for the screens to be updated when you're showing different slides, because we're still staring at the first one? So we can see what you're talking about, please? Thank you.
You can go to the site plan, you might. Okay, I'll put that board here as well. So this is the proposed site plan, and we scrambled the last day and a half or so to kind of revise this based on the revised architectural plans that were worked out earlier this week. So it was a work in progress. I apologize that I couldn't get these plans to email a little earlier, but we do have full sets ready today. But the site itself, it's 1.23 acres, 53,000 square feet. It's in a resident B zoning district, which I guess is essentially a bit of a moot point at this point since it's a Flexible subdivision plan. This site is blessed with very good permeable sandy soils and a low water table, so that was all good. The limit of work and the trees that are identified to be removed, and Karen will go through this in much more detail, but that's consistent, basically identical with the line that was approved on the Flexible subdivision plan. And any of the trees that have been removed in this area, which is a responsibility of the developer, Mr. Rojo, they're consistent with what was agreed upon with Kim and his landscape consultant at the time. I think they spent quite a bit of time on that aspect of it. As I said, the primary garage is there, we have a small sports car garage on that side. The septic system, we had designed that during the Flexible subdivision phase two, so that is out in the meadow to, so it kind of minimized the grade that would be required in front of the house. The house footprint is 2764 square feet, which is less than 3,000 square feet that would have been approved under the design guidelines for that home. And the RGAFA is about 4,400 square feet, which is less than the 5,500 square feet that had been approved under the design guidelines.
Does that include the sports car garage?
That's the entire RGAFA. The drainage on the site is actually pretty simple, because the soils are so good. So we've got a small drainage system under this driveway, which handles the runoff from the driveway. We have another small system that's under that driveway to handle the runoff from that driveway. And then we have a third infiltration gallery up here, which has been relocated based on the grading for the house, which handles the runoff from the roof of the structure. But they're fairly compact, and they're actually below grade, so it's not a situation of altering the grading for drainage or filling or any of that sort of thing. We have a couple of walls that we may still modify those a bit in terms of maybe coming up with a 45 degree bend in them. But those are, this aspect of the house right there is the only walkout section. The grade comes up there, seven or eight feet, and it comes up about four feet there. So, and Brent will talk about the massing and the view of the house from the back, that that grading was done to accommodate the new architecture and kind of minimize the mass of the house from this direction.
When you say walls, you meant retaining walls?
Retaining walls, yeah.
How high are they?
Well, this, at the highest point where it meets the house, it's about seven feet tall, and it filters down to nothing. And they're fairly short. This one's shorter because the grade's not coming up quite as high, so it's about 4'4".
So it's pretty close to the house that it looks like to be part of the house from the bottom.
Yeah, exactly. And then actually, over here, there's a deck over, a patio, so I think that'll also tend to mask that wall. In terms of some of the heights, and again, this was unique to this project based on the Flexible subdivision plan, but we're about 25 feet above grade at this point, the ridge of the house, or the top of the house, and 26 feet was allowable under the Flex Plan. And then just at this section, one section of walkout is, the height of the house there is about 35 feet above that terrace in the rear. And obviously, it's much less, because the grade comes up seven feet here, so the perceived height of the house is going to be much less along the side, and then that's a low element of the house as well. In terms of drainage, we're adding about 6,500 square feet of impervious area, so it's not a huge amount of impervious that's going on this lot. And again, it's easily handled by the three small infiltration systems. We've got about 200 cubic yards of fill going in, so there's not a huge amount of earthwork, you know, going in as well as the material, a lot of material on site can actually be reused because it's so sandy, so there'll be a slight imported material on the job. Did a couple of cross sections. And so this cross section runs through 120 Church Street as well as, it runs through 7 Lower Field Road as well. And the top of our house is 1578. The top of 120 Church Street's 186, so obviously, and anyone who's been on the site knows how high this goes up compared to Church Street, so we're well below that one. And then 7 Lower Field Road, that roof is about...
Could you stop for a minute until they catch up with the graphics, so those of us who are attempting to follow along can do so? It's hard to remember your numbers when we can't see them.
I don't think I have this drawing on...
Yeah, actually, I don't, because it wasn't part of the submission set, we just use these for presentation, and I didn't prepare presentation slides today.
Turn the...
Maybe you could, Rob, if you could, maybe you could just hold it up so that the audience could see it and indicate where the section's taken. I think that's the purpose of the...
Maybe I can get you a hand? It's crazy you came tonight, right?
Yeah, that's why I'm here. We had a wife.
So this is 120 Church Street, and this is, this section runs through the new home, and then it jogs over and around the street, the home at 7 Lower Field Road. So 120 Church Street, again, the top of that roof is about 186, the post house at the ridge of above our roof actually at 1578. 7 Lower Field Road is approximately 145 feet at the ridge line, so we're about 13 feet higher than the ridge at 17 that 7 Lower Field Road. What our geography is also probably over 20 feet higher. So then the other section that I took actually is through the existing home, the former Rojo home. I'll show it to the board first, and then I'll give it to Karen, to give it to the So that's the Rojo homestead, and that's the only home that we looked at on this section. And the ridge on that home is about 184, and again, we're below 158, so, and again, the geography goes up quite a bit when you get to that house, so it's quite a bit higher than there. And I think in terms of the...
Can we take a quick peek before you flash it to them? When you break, nobody breaks, it blows her.
Sure. So this is the section that's through the new proposed home and the existing home that was Lot 3 on the subdivision plan. And the star is the site's little ghost. I think I covered everything I wanted to speak about.
Just one question. When we were on the sidewalk earlier, you talked about the fact that the planning board had discussed the driveway width leading off of Church Street. And I think the initial submission showed 16 feet for the width of the driveway. But the question that came up at the, at the sidewalk was, if this is a driveway that's only serving two houses, it's essentially a two-house shared driveway, could we talk with the fire department about reducing that from 16 feet to 14? Because there's a, the section of the existing stone walls that lead from Church Street actually only seems to allow 14 feet. So instead of rebuilding those, could the fire department see as way clear to, the standard requirement for individual houses is 14 feet, and this is only a two-house driveway?
Right. Where the 16 feet came from originally was in talking to the fire department, because it served two houses instead of one. And I don't know whether their position has changed over the last couple of years, but they, they told me it was 14 feet for one and 16 feet for two. But the way I showed this on the plan was, was, I didn't change the driveway, the intention was not really to change those walls, so if it was an error in there, you know, the thought was, we try to get by with it and then just flare it out to 16 feet as we got past those walls. So that's how I was showing the driveway on the plan. And, you know...
There's a hydrant, right? On the driveway?
There's a hydrant...
On the driveway itself?
Back, back in here at the end of the driveway.
I think you showed it right there.
Yeah.
It's just to the left of the driveway, I think that's a hydrant.
I think that's a tree, but...
Okay, well, I thought I saw a hydrant on there.
No, you did, you did. The hydrant's down here, so it's to serve both, both houses.
So we have a hydrant.
Yep.
I just wonder if it's possible to go back to the fire department and say, we have a, we have a clear, flat, open space, we have a hydrant, could we reduce this down to 14 feet, reduce the paved area, increase the grassed area, and maybe not impinge so much on the, on the sugar maple root fall? I'm just, it's just a question I have.
I'm certainly willing to. I don't know whether you want to do it, Emy, or you want me to do it?
We'll ask again. I think we're going to find this later tonight, too, is the same thing, is that we've been having these discussions, and not only us, conservationists had similar discussions about driveway widths. If we find that they're willing to reduce them, we'll push it down.
Aren't there mitigating factors, or is this just an ironclad, you know, no, no specific site features, change the ironclad rule, it has to be 16 feet? I just, it just doesn't make any sense to me. You know, how many cars are actually going to be traveling on the street? I mean, this, it's a driveway. And if it's about the width of the, of the apparatus, I've never seen a fire truck 16 feet wide. I mean, maybe there is one, but usually they travel in regular 11-foot travel lanes of roads. So I just don't understand why it has to be an ironclad rule. If somebody could explain it in a way that I would understand, that would be helpful. But I don't understand why it's immutable, and I guess the Conservation Commission doesn't either.
Yeah. And I, I mean, I'm not kind of arguing their position, I won't say that what they'll tell me is that part of it is because they want to make sure that they can deploy their own grades.
Yeah, that is part of it, that's...
One way we deal with that is reinforced earth on either side of the driveway?
Yeah, they have, they're not holding that position anymore. I think they, they had a reinforced earth one that didn't work, or it didn't...
Where was that?
Was it a fire in the west?
Concord.
Really?
It was, yeah, it was...
Concord Street or Concord Town?
No, it was Concord Road. It was one of the, it was one of the Flex subdivisions at 99 that they, that they did...
They had a fire there?
No, not the fire, the, when they looked at the arrangement now. I don't know enough details about it, but they made them go back to a full paved width. And so now, the policy goes from building and fire is hold on the 14-foot wide pavement. And that's, it's...
Even for individual driveways?
Yes.
They're going to 16 feet even?
No, 14, not on individual driveway, under 14.
Well, why is there a difference for two houses versus one?
That I don't know.
What is the, if they can deploy their, their...
The outrun goes on 14?
On 14, why do they need 16?
I would only be guessing if I, but from other discussions with fire, I would, my guess is, it's the possibility of other cars getting around that, other cars in that driveway getting around.
Like, two feet's gonna happen.
I think maybe we could have a meeting at some point to try and get...
Why don't we say 14 feet, and then they'll call it, and then if they want to talk about it...
Well, 14 feet is actually what's in the Flex Up.
Well, then, let's...
It's the dimension called out in the Flex Up.
Well, then, let's say, what, what's with it?
You think it went up to 16?
I noticed like, I know it was reported in the registry of deeds, calls it 16. We had shown it at 14 through the whole thing, till we get close to the end, and we got talk to the fire department, and then, so when...
But that's not what the planning board approved.
No, that's the plan you guys signed.
But nobody told us.
He gets a couple of mulgins in 90.
I mean, I'm just saying, you know...
We're happy with an error driveway. So if we worked out with the fire department, we're happy to go that way.
Yeah.
You know, sometimes we're...
I don't see why you need a street for a two-house shared driveway, that's all.
Maybe we could get them out there just because of sensitivity with the sugar maples. Two feet may not seem like a lot, but they see what would disrupt and what would have to be dug up.
I'd advise against that.
Yeah.
What I would actually say is, sometimes the best way to handle it, I mean, this has happened on a couple of other projects, that we've kind of built it the way we wanted to build it, and then we brought them out, and they figured out that they could get their truck down there, and they were okay with it. But it's, it's one of those things that sometimes, if you ask the question ahead of time, the answer is going to be no.
I'd be worried about the walls of mid-Church Street, if you were to bring them out there and say, look...
You mean the angle of making, bringing trucks around that corner?
No, they weren't wider opening, because of their...
Well, I don't know what the answer is, but it just seems to me that this is just saying, we're the boss and, you know, and it doesn't matter, logic doesn't matter, this is what we're going to insist on, and that's the end of it.
I could make that argument, because every fire department, it's not just Weston, believe me, every fire department pretty much has that attitude that this is the way we do it. And thank God, it is Weston, because if it was one of the 20 other towns, it'd be 18 feet wide.
Whatever you have here for discussion.
The only thing I would say is...
I think we should do like...
Let's just, let's just do it at 14 and see what it is.
Let's just do it, okay, we'll do it at 14. I think we should, the discussion we should arrange should be like with a planning board rep, myself, trying to invite Kong Kong to it as well.
And Leslie, you, and...
I'm trying to volunteer, you know? Are you going to buck up and find out?
And actually, just one thing that I would interject, and John and Emy can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the, that section of the driveway coming in, you know, off Church Street to serve the two lots, I think that's on Keith Rojo's plate as part of the subdivision.
That's right. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's...
So it's not, so you can put it in this decision, but you've really got to go back to that.
I didn't mean to go there, I just was making an observation, hoping that we could make a modification, or try to, at least give it a try.
Yeah, well, I only bring it up just to make sure that everyone's on the same page, because we've got two different parties.
That's true, yeah.
All right. Okay, so...
So I'm done.
Gladescape him?
You want the gladescape him, or you want the architecture person?
Gladescape him.
So...
Oh, color.
So we got the news.
Okay, so you, I take it we don't have a slide of that either, Emy?
No.
So Karen, maybe what you could do is, instead of repeating the presentation over and over again...
Maybe you can angle that tripod a bit.
This way?
Yeah, maybe we can angle the tripod so that people would at least get something of a view.
Okay. Can you guys see it?
If it's at an angle, we'll see it at an angle again.
So, it's kind of in front of everyone, but I didn't see this new grade until this afternoon. And so, basically, last...
With a laser field.
Oh, yeah, well, I'm going to do a little, a little flippy show here. So last, last week when we came in, and I didn't really present last week, but after the sidewalk, we had talked about really redefining the lawn and pulling that back from the woodland edge, so there would, there would be a clear definition of what was going to remain as kind of more natural ground cover, what was under the woods, and just pulling that so that it's a smaller lawn because we're having this lawn here. So that was the configuration of, of last week before we changed the house and changed how the lower terrace was going to work. So there's, there are retaining walls at the lower terrace, and we're also proposing to connect this upper deck to the lower terrace by having a little bit of a landing, and then some steps that follow down along those walls. The grading that Rob's shown is really pretty stiff, and this happened today, but I tried to soften it out a little bit and make that more of a curve so that we could have a more, kind of organic slope, and in some areas have it flatten out a little bit so that we could put some, some, some like bands of shrubs, so that it wouldn't just be one, one kind of plant. So there could be some bands of shrubs to get some color and then ground cover, because it's still going to be pretty steep in this small area, and we have, you know, the minimal distance to this no-touch area. So that's kind of basically the, the difference between what we showed on the sidewalk than last week than this week. Most of the screening plants, all of the screening plants are part of the Flexible subdivision, so all of that, that part is pretty determined. What I'm showing on this plan too, that I don't usually show on some plans that I have, is, is the canopy of the existing trees, to show that there, there are quite a few existing trees on the site already. So these ones that are kind of the lighter mass here are the existing pines that are along the meadow edge, and then underneath, you see the ones that are a little bit brighter in color. I know it's kind of hard to see... And then underneath you see the ones that are a little bit brighter in color. I know it's kind of hard to see. Those are the ones that are the proposed trees that were determined in the flexible subdivision. So all of these kind of brighter colored trees, these ones in here, the darker, all these darker trees here, this apple orchard, all these kind of dark trees. And this also was requested at the sidewalk to show the trees that were proposed for the lot next door. So we can see how the two lots are gonna work together. So I imported those on so you could see how much this screening and, and is gonna kind of encompass the lot and keep that woodland feel.
Can you bring it up a little closer so we can screen that out as an idea of what's going on down there?
Yeah, so we can screen that.
Exactly. That's our bag, thank you.
Can you point out the trees that are gonna be removed?
So the trees that are gonna be removed are these ones with the Xs and all of those were also pre, pretty much pre-approved with the subdivision. Because, because ones that are out in the, the ones that are in here, in, in the women of work are ones that were pre-approved, but they also need to come out for, to do the construction.
This one shows going out and this shows a new one coming in. That, isn't that part of the, the alley sort of approach?
Yeah, that. There is one dead tree, that.
Yeah, there was that little dead one.
Yeah.
Maybe that's one.
That is a new one. That, this, this is, so these are the ones that are the old. See how it has a circle, circle, circle? And it has it bent around to be protected. These ones on this side are new. So AR two is a base of room of a certain size according to the list.
They're not matching the ones here.
These are sugar, this one is, this is a sugar, sugar, sugar. So I didn't pick out, I didn't pick out any of these trees.
Okay.
So, you know, some of them I would not have picked because they're hemlocks and other things that I, in theory would work, but in my mind are not good trees to use now, but that's what was approved. So if we need to change those, then, then we need to have a conversation with Kim and do a field change or whatever. But all these proposed trees that are in this were part of the flexible subdivision. What this plan, what, what I'm trying to show on the plan is what's coming around here and I know that's not necessarily what Kim is gonna.
Right. The sports car garage, did I misunderstand? They were supposed to be here or they lived there?
No, so, so.
Is it moved?
No, so you come in the driveway and this is the main family parking area. And then you go past it and then this is the, the extra garage and the guest parking. So that no one's parking on the driveway.
Okay.
And then this planting is like a low planting so that the view is out to the meadow through the trees, which was kind of in the flexible subdivision too, but where it designed it is.
So you talked about sort of being aggressive grading and.
Yeah.
And Kim and I were at the sidewalk Tuesday and there was some great, incredible examples of early aggressive grading. They just bring it out and it just drops and you have like a two-foot drop and so it's very artificial. So this is, are you gonna like feather this in to a more naturalist, like we just talked about, doing something a little bit more naturalist?
Are you talking about like an antique house that has like a plank thing?
No, but it's just a new house and you just.
So, so it's pretty tight in here, right? And it, and it, by pulling this back to try and soften the height of this wall, we're pulling, we're pulling some grades up against it. And it's, it's aggressive in the slope.
What is the slope?
Because it's like a two.
Oh, two and a half.
Yeah, so two to one, three to one slope, just steep, which is why. Which is why we're proposing to plant it, right, okay, to hold it in.
Good, we're not really like right in there. It's just fitting into the natural area. I mean, does it just stop and there's like an eighteen-inch drop off?
No, no.
So right in this area, this is, this grade has been changed at all. What's being changed is up in here, see, it's hard to see on the, the electronic plan because the conports are all solid. But in the, in this one, since it was, since we did it hand down, the dashed are the existing, which is gonna stay because we gotta change that. And then the solid ones are the changes that we're making. So we're pulling this contour up, we're pulling this up and it's gonna make like a swale that directs water down around the house. So kind of in the natural way that it's going already. And then so these solid lines here, see how it kind of waves like that?
Right.
That's what we're.
So these are little planting, tiny little areas that you've got to.
Yeah, so it just, it's just like in an area, widen it out a little bit so you're not planting the, you know, the shrubs like this.
So that they die in three years because there's no.
Yeah, so that we can, we can, we can, it's gonna, I think when we do it, it's, it's more, the concept is what's concept because we need to, we need to show how they connect, but the actual sculpting of the slope will be more subtle when it's, you're the sculptor. Hope, well, I'll arrest the sculptor.
Trees being removed, respected in this flexible plan as well?
Yep. All the, all the tree removals were already approved.
And, you know, the grading was a little bit of a challenge because we were trying to respect the limited work that was established in the flexible plan. I mean, if we had five feet, you know, flexibility, then that would, that would probably take the curse off the, the grading challenge quite a bit. But yet this was all done under the gun, kind of quickly to get it ready for tonight or something.
And you said you didn't pick out the trees, you know, the trees that were picked out?
Well, um, there's a lot of hemlocks to introduce first now, which in my mind isn't a good thing to do. I love them, but.
They require maintenance.
They require a lot of maintenance and I.
Yeah, Karen.
I don't put them on my plot because.
But they, but they are, they are native species, aren't they?
They're native species, but they're under attack by worry, deldger, which means people, if people plant them and they're time to compete and they have to keep.
I have some.
It seems like.
So what, what would you put in?
So, I mean, I think we could do, we could look at something, you know, like spruces or, or white firs or. First, what might be a better native or something else in respect of an evergreen for an evergreen and a size for a size. But it seems like.
A little bit more mixed or green.
Yeah, and it just seems to be, it doesn't make sense to introduce a tree that's gonna, you know, is gonna die and then someone's gonna be tied to replace it.
If I could just interject, Karen had voiced her concern almost day one and I had brought it up to Keith and he was completely open to if the board supported it, that if the sixty-two or whatever trees, if there was a little bit of mixing and matching for survivability or whatever it might be.
Kim, what was the rationale for the hemlocks? Just to refresh our memories.
So it's native, then it's shade tolerant. And there are other options that are not native and shade tolerant and then there's pines.
Which are not shade tolerant.
Some white firs will.
Right, those when you do, right, right, yeah.
And so typically.
And some white spruces too.
Right. And so typically you guys don't need, we don't, we make an administrative change.
Right. Oh, okay.
Yeah, and it's not.
But that would be allowed under something like this, which is such a very formalized, you know, subdivision where everything was called out so far in advance?
Well, it would be a change in the, in the special permit.
Special permit, yeah.
But I'm afraid to lose all the native hemlocks. I think, I think the mix makes a little sense.
I think we allow, we worry in the special permit, the same language that we do in our site.
So Kim has, has the.
Yeah, that we, that species changes and adjustments like that are considered field changes and we have that latitude.
Good, if we have that latitude, then great.
We're clever, aren't we?
But that's interesting. So you would have all these hemlocks delivered and then Kim would be there and say, oh, this is not gonna work. But it's like, it's well in advance, but.
We would make that decision ahead of time.
And when you say field change, I think about.
No, 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 I usually get a phone call from the contractor saying.
Yeah.
We have these. Instead of what's the, you know, what's the thinking and.
Okay.
But I think we could talk about it if we want to.
I guess I, I'd like, I don't know if we have to make this a vote or anything. I'd like to keep some of the hemlocks because they are native, whether it's a third or whatever. Because I have hemlocks and you're, I'll come up.
I would be on record. Highly, highly not recommending that.
Okay, I hear you.
Because it's, it's.
Survivability.
They're, they're.
I understand, I understand.
You're asking someone to maintain a tree that, that is.
I, I mean, I get, I don't wanna mix mine.
I, I love hemlocks, but I will not plant them.
That's why you might have to come to a vote.
In any way, where I can because they're, you're, if, if there's not deldger in the, in the neighborhood, you're gonna introduce it because it's ends of trees.
I would like, I would like to keep some of them, whether it's twenty-five percent or a third of native species.
Well, it'd be native species, but I don't, I don't think that should be hemlocks.
What else would you suggest as a native species?
We just, we just suggest like.
Spruce.
All right, but you're not doing like, say, what are the serbians' brooks or any of those?
No, I would say keep a native tree, but, but, I mean, and, you know, I, I just, I don't sound like that.
You sound like somebody who doesn't like white pines.
Everybody hates their quartz.
Everyone hates white pines, but.
Yeah, everybody seems like.
I'm just, I just, I just think it's because of the disease and because of, that someone is now required to treat them and they're tied to this deed where once a tree dies, they have to replace it with another hemlock. It's not fair.
Okay, so why don't we leave it this way?
There are significant hemlocks in the neighborhood. So you're not introducing it to the neighborhood?
No, no, she's, she's, she said that the trees come pre-infect.
There could be significant hemlocks in the neighborhood.
It'll get infected.
That won't get infected by the trees that come from the nursery with the deldger.
I think we need to go on to talk about the neighborhood.
Well, it's gonna have to, what we'll have to do is, is instead of leaving it open, we're gonna have to identify what the.
What the sub would be.
What the, the species would be that was substituted for the hemlocks. You know, it, it would have to be incorporated in the, in the.
In the decision.
Decision, site plan review decision. So somehow, I guess it's a matter of you guys working together to see if there's some balance that we could achieve that gives us some native species.
Yes, that's more.
Not necessarily hemlocks.
As a native one, we're trying to maintain them.
Yeah.
Jim did say that there were multiple native species that could be.
Yeah, and I can relay this since it's falling on the current owner to do all of the trees and there's a hundred seventy-five total, somewhere around there. We'll relay this all back and I know he needs to talk to Imai about, I don't know, the road, but that as well, Kim. So however you guys want to do it, I'll, I'll make sure he gets all the information.
Yeah, no, it's, it would be a change in, it would be in our decision, site plan review decision. So it's, it doesn't apparently require a change in the special permit, so he's not on the hook for that.
Okay.
Okay. Are you doing site lighting?
Yep. So the lighting, the lumens are fifteen, twenty-one. The light fixtures are all dark skies. Fifteen thousand and twenty-one lumens, one, five, zero, two, one. Okay, so there's, there are two, I have my lights over there. There's two baller type lights, one on either side of these driveways. So instead of like a post light, it's a baller light up the sides shining down. And the other lights are all downlights. There's two over the garages, which is a cube that's shedding down. And then over the front doors and, and the back door, the back door has a cube because it's a sconce. But there's forgers and underneath there's a, a light that is flush light. That's right, yes.
Do those step lights?
No, uh, well, now I might need some step lights, but I didn't know that until now. Because I didn't, because that slope wasn't there. So these are the kind of, they're, they're like the modern tanks, so they're just a baller. And these are the, the cube lights that block that goes over the garages. And then this one is, this one is flush, so it's another square.
You need two ballers for symmetry or?
They're two.
No, no, they're. Two on each?
No, no, there's one on, there's just one on each drive around the inside.
Okay.
And it's basically, it's kind of almost path line in really, because it's, you know, if you come down the driveway, then if you're coming through the street, it's kind of a path like here and here. And there may be one here and there, like four, two. So there's sconce, sconce, sconce.
You said there may be one. Is there a?
I had, I had one right here, but I'm not sure if this is changed a little bit of what, of the new architecture, so I just wanna make sure. So there's, there's either one there or there's not.
But the one that may be there is included in the.
Yes, yes, it's already included in the calculations.
All right. Okay, you have slides of the, of the building?
Yes, I, that we did get today.
All right, so can, can we start back from where we were?
Yes.
And move forward to where we are?
Yes, we can. So, um, do you want me to walk through this grade or do you wanna do it?
In terms of the progression of the site.
Progression of the design.
Evolution?
Yeah. Sure, yeah, I can, I can.
Okay, here.
Do you have the?
So this is, these are all your renderings, sets of renderings as you want to. You should be able to.
Is that, this isn't from the sidewalk though, this is from after the sidewalk. Do you have the one from the sidewalk or not?
No, this is what I have for you.
Go with the ones you're doing.
Okay, so this is, this was actually.
Was that?
What you said, this one before this one.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah.
I don't have that one.
The one with, with the overhanging bruce.
That one I don't have.
Okay.
So that was.
You sent us, I thought it had overhanging.
That was the first iteration.
That was the first iteration.
No, that was not the first iteration.
Okay.
There was, I thought I didn't bring it.
Yeah, I don't have that one.
That's why I thought we had the telephone conversation this afternoon.
There were two, two versions prior to this one.
Yeah.
So.
This is going back and forth in order of time, so anyway.
So I guess the, but the, the, the general thrust of, of the massing of the house is, is dictated in the, the, by the subdivision where it starts on the, on the left as a one-story structure and builds up to help mediate between the beerhouses over on the, in, in the site and the, and the road and sort of building up to it. And if we go around, this was, we, we introduced some vertical elements and it was looking a little bit boxy and so with some, going to a, after comments at the, at the sidewalk and some, some comments from, from Al about, you know, trying to introduce more horizontal elements to really bring down the massing, the apparent massing more, the actual massing is, is still the same really in terms of building heights. But by introducing the strong horizontal bands, we've gone through and really started to bring the, the apparent massing down. And then this is the, the current design. The, we also went to more natural materials and, and more, more of a.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Really helped.
More, more of a mid-century modern aesthetic to grouping windows and making bands, especially with the, the vertical band interrupting the, the really strong horizontal here and then getting some bands at the, at the tops of these other pieces and grouping, grouping the windows together to really stretch out the building visually. We also added a chimney at the end. So as the, the massing builds up from the low point at the street builds up and then the chimney sort of acts as a, an exclamation point to, to sort of stop it. And that was a helpful suggestion from Al to, to really, you know, in, in working with, with Al and Imai to refine the design and make it something that is more suited to the, the site itself.
Windows, they're clear, they're not tinted, are they?
No, they're not.
I just wanna make sure that was just a graphic.
Yeah.
That's just sort of, yeah.
Yeah.
What materials, what is the lighter beige color material?
So this, this would be buff brick and we're, we're investigating, but, but trying to get something that isn't just a standard brick size, you know, maybe something longer and, and with, with narrow. you know, maybe something longer and, and with, with narrower mortar joints to give, give so, uh, a, a more of a specialized texture into it. And then the, the general siding would be a shiplap siding that's painted. Oh, we have some...
I brought some samples from cedar to the corners.
The, the doors, garage doors and the front door would be cedar accents, natural cedar here. This would be the, the shiplap where there would be a...
That's a channeled down, just as an example, there are a number of different profiles.
And then the corners would be woven corners, well, not woven, but this is the, the corner board instead of having a, an actual corner board.
So there's a really tight...
So it's a, it's a tight jewelry.
Almost make it like rusticated, almost like stone look?
Yeah, I mean, there's cleanliness that we're trying to achieve with not having corner boards. And the performance of that versus a mitered corner is much better. But we can, we've done both, so we might play...
Makes the corner part of the way, basically.
And what's the horizontal, uh, fascia going to be made out of?
That will be a, a painted, um, either azat or boral. But it'll be painted, painted a dark, dark bronze type color.
If you go back, uh, just to the previous slide, the palette before was incredibly somber.
Yes.
And that actually, for me, increased the mass, because it looks like a battleship. I, I'm not sure that the, that the revised palette, the revised palette's going the other way. You know, it's, it's, it's a lot lighter. It might be possible to tone it slightly so that it's not a battleship, but it's, but it, it's not white either. You know, it's sort of, it's toned down a little.
It came out a little bit whiter in the, in the rendering, but we're looking at a, a white beige, you know, type color.
We could tone that down a little bit.
And these houses do have generators, this house is generating everything and they're all going to be located...
Yeah, I could show that, but it's on the side of, of the garage, so...
Which garage?
Up here.
Street, the double.
The street side.
Street side.
On the church, street side. But the plan is also to put a nice, um, modern cedar fence around that just so, even though we'll have plenty of plantings just to mask it from the street.
The rear, you don't have a rendering of the rear elevation in this current iteration.
Not a rendering, but I have a, a drawing of it.
Yeah, maybe comparing the elevations would also be helpful on the backside.
Yeah, there were a few tweaks to the rear elevation work, I know.
Imai, do you have, happen to have...
Oh, do you have the...
Yeah, because otherwise people in the room can't see.
Lands there.
Yeah, right there.
So this is a previous, do you have previous elevations?
I do have previous elevations too. This was just the one, one...
No.
More recent, and then we have the other one that was...
Where's the...
One more around.
Okay, there's the previous one, that's just a bunch of pieces, a series of boxes.
Right.
Both holes punch in the wall.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and the, that translates into the current one. And by the way, the grade is, you know, exposes a lot of foundation wall and in the bulk of the, of the elevation is three stories high. Trying to get that mass down so that it's not just a, a wall on the backside.
Right, we were, we were bringing grade around a little bit here, but we've, we've gone to bringing it up for this whole length, doing a retain wall here and then over here bringing this around. We moved the window over and brought the, the grade around over here too to really, as you said, set, set the, the house into the site and, and reduce the, the apparent mass.
All right, so the current one, uh, looks like we must be able to find it again.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, uh, and that's the previous one.
This is your current one?
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
So...
It's a little lower.
The grade, the grade comes up here and up here. So there's just a, an area away for the walkout, basically.
And there's a feature that you can see on the plan, not on the elevation here, where there's an angle that we introduced to the overhang that covers a majority of the deck that we also put in an angle in the master. We put in an angle as well, so you can't see it from that kind of flat view or from an angle when you're seeing a certain perspective, it's going to really, really look poor.
Helpful suggestion.
And that was also from Monday's meeting, so a lot of, a lot of great ideas came from that.
Pardon?
So let's see the elevations in the, uh, I think that's the presentation.
Okay.
All right, questions, if others for the board?
I, I like it, I like it much better than the first one. I think it does, nestles in a lot better, it doesn't feel quite so outstanding. I'm glad that the back, which is going to be exposed to some of the neighbors, is smaller. It's less exposed, it's more, again, more landscaping around it. Good?
Thank you.
Okay. Consultants, comments?
We're with you, right, we got to digest it, right, that we got on this afternoon.
We got it this afternoon.
We got it this afternoon, so...
Okay, so you need to look at it.
Yeah. I mean, there's nothing, you know...
The only change is that wraparound kind of...
Yeah, this, it's just, I just gotta make sure, you know, on my own, like, you know, the water from the roof can get to that.
Yeah, we looked at that, Dave, we, we gotta run the drains all around the front to get to that back.
Okay, so, but, let me, let me just digest it, but it's not, I mean, we're not splitting the atom, we should be able to... My stuff should be in our...
Same thing with the landscaping, yeah, you just need to look at it.
Yes.
Didn't see it before now, so, okay. Questions, comments from the audience? Yes?
Okay, um, Alicia Primer, one seventy-nine Church Street. Two things, one is a procedural question. I'm quite confused because last week there was a very large issue made of the fact that the plans had only just come into the planning board. And I'm hearing tonight that a number of these things came in this afternoon, so I'm wondering what changed about that timing and why is that not an issue tonight?
It's, it's still an issue and we're gonna have to continue again so that people won't have a chance to digest the information. But rather than showing nothing, you know, we wanted to show progress from last week, so that's, that's where we are right now.
Just curious. Now, my comment is, this is a much nicer plan, obviously, than the previous iterations and I recognize your contribution to that and I think it's much nicer. But I think that we have to think of the context. And I am a member of the historical commission and I, I forgot to bring it up at our last meeting, it wasn't on the agenda, so we couldn't discuss it. However, I spoke today to my, one of the chairs and she recalled, as I do, that at town meeting when I spoke to the town and asked for funding to preserve the house at fifty-five Coburn, which is part of the subdivision, I told the town that we would be preserving almost a mile of historic landscape. And that landscape, as I described it, included Victorian and the very earliest colonials in Weston. To introduce a house of this, however lauded, bolded design is, to introduce a modern house into that context, I think is inappropriate. And I think that there are other places where a house like this might look fine, but not in one of Weston's most historic streetscapes. And also, I did promise the town that we would be preserving that landscape. And I know that as part of a flexible subdivision, your, this board has ultimate design approval over the plans and can say that it's not appropriate or it is appropriate. And I'm just asking as a historical commission member that you consider it not appropriate for this site, because I really don't think it works there. And I also have concerns about the rear view as you come, it may nestle in as you're coming north on Church Street from town, but the rear, particularly at night, will be very visible across that open field, which is protected town land, and I think it's inappropriate for that reason as well. Thanks.
The, the issue for me, Alicia, is maintaining the focus on the original building. And you could, I mean, I, I appreciate what you're saying. The question is how to create a design that, that fits in, that has the, the sort of minimal visual impact and has to retain the focus in that, of the, of the original house. I mean, there is a, there is a sort of a school of thought that says that it's, you, you increase the focus on the original house through an aesthetic contrast. And if the contrast is not, is not totally inappropriate, then you've achieved that primary goal, which is to, which is to, which is to create something that's understated, both in terms of massing and in terms of impact and to, and, and, and focuses more attention to the original house because there is that contrast. So you could take that, that position. I, I mean, the, the design guidelines do allow for the possibility of, of contemporary design on this particular lot.
That I understand.
That is, that is there. These, and they have, they have, I mean, there are a number of departures from the guidelines and I pointed them out last week. So what I was trying to do is achieve a balancing act between the, the, you know, a design that goes in this direction versus one that's historically evocative. And, um, I was trying, you know, I was trying to achieve that balance. I may not have done it, I don't know, but, um, but that was what my, where my effort was directed. So, but I appreciate your comments. You were, you were talking about having a consistent, um, aesthetic message on that site, but if you look at that neighborhood, there are a number of houses in that neighborhood on the Coburn that are modernist. There's actually one on Church Street, which is, which is a modernist house. There are other kinds of design aesthetics as well, the, the one at the corner of Church and Coburn. Somebody described it as a colonial design, it, it isn't really, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a different kind of expression. It's not, it's not altogether historically evocative. It's, it's, it's an expression all by itself. So there is variety in the neighborhood. And the question then is how much, how much variety to, is acceptable? There are precedents for modernist houses in the neighborhood. There is a precedent on Church Street, just a block away for a modernist house.
Which one are you calling on Church Street? Are you comparing this to?
The one, the one at the corner, the other corner of Coburn where it comes around i- in Church Street. This, that's, that is, I think that's a deck house.
Oh, that's, oh, but that's completely invisible.
It's completely invisible behind the curtains, it's set low, not even visible.
A one-story house below grade, below the grade of Church Street, basically.
I think, I think it's a, I mean, I understand that, but I, I like the neutrality of this house. I like the fact that it doesn't pretend with a pitched roof and clavering to be historical. I think it actually does set up the entrance to the big house at the end nicely. I think it's, it's a bit, it's a, it's a, it's a chorus player, you know, it's not trying to be out there. And I appreciate that. And I think with all the screening that is being done, it is going to be back quite a bit and you're not going to see a lot of it, that's my hope at least.
I hope so as well.
So, seven Lower Field Road. With respect, you know, by contrast, the thing that's not similar is the one that's going to stand out. So I think, you know, in your comments there, that having a house is so different than everything else. So there is, you mentioned that flat roof houses around the corner, but it's not of this modernist style. If you go up Bay State Road, there's a very modern looking house there, it's a beautiful house tucked back in the corner there, but it stands out quite clearly compared to everything else that's in that neighborhood. And I think, you know, regardless of how well it's nestled in, Alicia makes a great point about the fact that if you're coming down Church Street across that field, based on the lighting that we're looking at here, this is a big glowing box up on that hill, the way that's going to be set back. The trees are being taken out there, there's being some left in that no disturb zone. It would be glowing right through that and it would be quite visible in that type of, that type of the evening. And it's going to be very, very different than anything else that's actually in that historic area. It does, it does not fit. Based on the definition of a flexible sub, a flexible sub calls for, example, the contemporary. This isn't contemporary, this is modern. There is a difference and I know you're very well schooled in, in architecture and that is not actually what that should call for. If you read the design guidelines, the examples that are given there are absolutely nothing even remotely close to what this is. And I think those examples give the spirit of what was meant in the flexible that you spent so passionately described last week about how much time and effort went into defining those guidelines. And they're completely ignored in this design. It does not match even one bit about what was actually expressed within there other than it follows a word that contemporary and constr- contorts it to be modern. I don't think that's consistent, I don't think that's accurate, what's actually being quoted. I have a number of other questions about smaller pieces on that. If you said this is going to be continued relative to drainage and other things like that, I would ask, I would assume we'd probably want to cover those things in a later, later meeting continuance?
When we've had a chance for our consultants to actually look at the, at the documents, I think that would be the right time to do that.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, you know, I, I understand your, your issue, I, I do. And what I, all I was trying to do is see if I could make this proposal at least be accommodating and be accommodated by the context. It was, it was an effort on my part to see if, if I could do it. You may think it, it works, you may think it doesn't work.
I do not think it does.
I, I, I understand that.
So I take us entirely out of context. And then the other element of it is we have design guidelines about the house on Lot Two. And by the way, this is going, it's, it's, it's disconnected here. And so now we'll have a very modern house and so yes, this may, by your definition, have a different contrast with the existing house, but now there are very clear and very strict rules on what can be in Lot Two. And so if we envision Lot Two being there as the house is designed within the requirements...
Lot Two's gonna be a challenge.
Lot Two is a real challenge and I, I mean, you know, my personal view is Lot Two, I pray never gets built. You know, and I think that would be the best outcome possible actually here. And honestly, I think if Lot One and Lot Two were combined, then I think it solves a lot of problems associated with this. Because now there's only one house in that driveway, so your driveway issues are resolved.
There you go. Somebody might want to step up.
Yes, yes.
Anybody else with comments or questions? Yes?
Steve Oppenheimer, sixty-four Coburn Road, about her. I just wanted to mention that I love the design. I think that by having flat roofs, it's a much lower massing than it would otherwise. And I think, as you pointed out, I think it makes it subservient to the, to the original house on the site. And, you know, perhaps the colors might be toned down a little so that it doesn't stand out as much as it looks like it would in that rendering. But, and I agree with what you said about having the contrast of, of modern architecture could in fact make it even more subservient, which I think is primarily done by the flat roofs. But I, I think it's a great design for this particular site.
Anyone else with comments or questions? Good, then, uh, we'll continue to what date you...
Fifteenth.
The fifteenth of May.
Of May, yeah.
Right, and in which case the new chairman will be discussing the project. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask, who is here for forty-seven Ash Street? Couple of people. And who's here for five Colchester?
Also zero comments.
Okay, so why don't we go ahead with forty-seven Ash Street? And let's see, there were a couple of things that were outstanding you wanted to take a look at, Jay. Why don't we just address those? As I remember, one of the issues was screening from the driveway to the neighbor.
So unfortunately, Jane can't be here tonight, she had a conflict. So the actual landscape architect submitted this plan last week to Ema. I think Kim has reviewed it?
Yes.
And so she's actually added the additional screening along the side.
Can I ask a favor? Since the board and the screen are almost the same intensity, that I can't really see you pointing to areas. It would be helpful to everybody here if we used the screen, I think.
Okay.
Again, it's also bigger. I mean, I can hear something there more than I can on the wall.
You might use this because I have to send it somewhere. I could be able to use this.
All right, sure.
Try Chee Chee?
Sure, as long as you don't poke anybody in the eye.
So I think one of the questions, or one of the comments was, what we were going to do in this area, because a lot of this was decisionless. And what they actually, with the car coming this way, there was worry about flat, headlights covering this house on the side. So this has been, all been changed or added through there. So now they've added some hemlocks on that side and some cypress through that area.
You miss the early done.
I miss the early done.
Good thing Karen's still down. She's not quite gone.
I actually just took your card because I go, we have to talk.
Watching on.
So yeah, so there's been, so cypress and the hemlocks have been added to that area to enhance that area to provide full screening for the year round. They've also, based on one of the comments from the board, we had talked about putting a wooden fence along the property line to help with the headlights. So it's a, oh, sorry again. There's a fence now that runs along the side.
Why don't you use that thing?
What, how high is that fence?
So it'll be a six-foot-high fence that runs right along the property line on that edge. So that's your own.
Could that work? We could set it up.
Exactly. And then they've added a few plantees, a few more plantees in the front, a few more plantees in the middle of that, prior to the actual crossing area.
There she is, there she is.
Oh.
Just coming from Concord.
Jay just described it in your last...
Good, I won't go ahead.
No, no, no.
I just mentioned then that this got enhanced here, the fence going along this edge. Some additional fences in here and here, and the sides have went up a little bit.
Exactly.
So you want to...
You can take your coat off and your purse and collapse for a minute.
We, the only other thing, Jay really summarized it. The only thing, there was one mention of a tree right in here that might grow too large and its branches would overshadow the neighbor's property. So I added two more camisipus glauca, white cypress. And they stay very narrow, forty-six feet. So they should, they should stay contained on the properties. So, but yes, that's, yeah, we added, we took away six, six, I don't know, brush buckeye down at the bottom and added hemlock, which are shade tolerant.
Do you like hemlock?
Well, I don't like the woolly adalgia, but I do like when there's a tree. Yes, I prefer them to bite them.
Is there, do you have a concern that they could terminate the existing hemlocks by bringing in these nursery hemlocks that have been exposed to woolly adalgia?
I think the hemlocks, well, one thing, you can treat the woolly adalgia with dormant oils in the spring. But generally, I think you can, you can resource the hemlocks from trees that don't, that are, they don't carry, or they're more concerned about their vertical practices. And we're going to probably lower that.
Okay.
Good answer.
Ema, were those the only areas of concern that we touched on?
No, we actually had the, you talked to fire department about narrowing the driveway.
And they said, let me guess.
Great idea.
They said, excellent.
Yeah, he said no, but we're working with Michelle and ComCom to get them to change their opinion. So she sent that email today. We're waiting to hear about a response. It should be in the next few days.
There was a couple letters with Nick. We had conservation last night. So Michelle did say she was going to talk to them about doing the twelve feet. We added, we had a note on the plan now, we updated the site plan, that the section, the section of the limited work that's on, right along the twenty-five foot notice curve, is going to be a chain link fence to make sure that we don't encroach it to twenty-five foot notice curve.
During construction.
During construction.
Right.
They're actually going to have a peer review for the construction portion of this, that work from the conservation. And then we're going to, we also added steel fence under erosion control on the downside. Yeah.
Dana, what about the discussion between ComCom and the fire department? Do you think it might be persuasive here?
I think they actually have our email here. I think she deemed basically as saying that the minimal width around the driveway, environmental constraints. She just wants to reconsider it, yeah.
Okay.
Hopefully she can persuade her better than I did.
I'll have my way.
We can say something about the impacting the roots of those specimen sugar makers. One point one, Church, and see how far that gets. Good, so...
I have one more thing. We have a letter from ComCom as well.
All right.
Just want everyone to take a look at. Kind of coordinated with the Western Forest and Trails Association about what kind of wind on the UZ. So she followed up with a letter, and they've obviously worked with Jay and him on this. I can pull it up to you for the audience.
Well, this is from March. This is a month ago.
Yes, it's different, or so this doesn't reflect what happened last night?
Not last night, no.
Oh, so it's just...
So there was part of the discussion last night was about that, about bounding the property lines along the conservation lane? So that required...
Oh, that's right. You mean that the actual boundary stakes, whatever they're called, stone monuments, et cetera?
Exactly.
So what we've done is, I remember it before in the past, is just appended the Conservation Commission's memorandum to our decision. So we can just do that again this time. Were no changes in the site lighting?
No.
Any further comments from Kim or Dave?
I had another engineer looking for the drainage again. She was fine with it. Just forwarded that email to Ema, not Dana. Ema sent it to Dana. And then, I don't think this is in the general discussion. I haven't looked specifically at the numbers for the Abutter to the right. And just, she pulled out the two-year storm for me, and both the rate and the volume going to the Abutter from the right. It goes, it's a very minimal amount now in existing, and it goes down to zero once they, once they do their improvement. So I, I have called the two, the two-year storms as a small storming model. So it gives you the best idea of what's going to happen on a day-to-day basis. So it's a, a noticeable amount goes now, and it will be...
The building condition will be less then.
Will be less. And then Jay sent a Coburn detail, which I've looked at, but just understanding, we're going to have a fence in front of it?
No, it would be on top of it.
It would be on top of it, okay. Then my, then that's, I just want the, I don't want anything blocking the Coburn.
Correct, yep. Yep, so what we have is it's eleven-inch, basically open space of the Coburns, that whole entire span. And then we have the, basically a god rail. So it'll be just a little wooden fence on top of a little Coburn. That's the box Coburn, it'll serve as a god rail in essence.
And then what is ComCom here reviewing, the constructability of it?
No, they are just going to make sure that we don't go into the notice curve. So they're going to hire a pack on to be, to witness as we're doing the excavation and that kind of stuff. Once we're out of that area, then they'll be done.
Okay.
What about the laydown area? Because it's a strange site in that you have more space to do laydown after you take them of the house in front. And you'd be going back and forth down the construction area. But your area in the back is constricted because of the notice curve, because of the building and your grades. Do you have an idea of how you're handling, you know, material laydown, storage, all of that?
Stockpile and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, so the, so basically the parking, so the metal is going to last, so a lot of the construction parking is going to happen on front.
Okay.
So there's going to be a lot of foot traffic that way. You know, we have some trucks that have to go over that side there. And then, then depends, you know, basically a lot of the stuff would be delivered over here and then brought over by internal truck center on site, cast and back.
So they're going to bring, they're going to come up with semis or big trucks, drop everything off there. And they're going to shuttle it between X and Y and on an as needed basis. And is right now the building is clad, or is it mainly, I can't remember?
It's both. It's got cedar siding, some metal panels.
Okay.
And then it's also got some veneer on the bottom of it.
Okay. So in that little metal, you're going to have stockpiling, you're going to have maybe a construction trailer, you're going to have, you're going to have labor parking.
Yep.
You're going to have everything in there. And then the chain link fence is going to keep it from spreading either into the neighbors or into the wetlands.
Correct.
Questions for the audience of this? Yes?
On the Abutter fifty-three Ash, I was wondering if I, my name's Nina, and I live in Pat, I'm at fifty-three Ash, and I'm going to be a Abutter over that one. Should I consider having my property surveyed and having markers put up so that we actually know where my stuff's, where they're not supposed to be?
If I were you, I think I would.
Okay.
You don't have to, but...
Yeah, I was thinking, well, I mean, looking at the plans, I mean, the driveway goes within ten, eleven feet of the property line. So with all that stuff happening, I think that there's concern. So I was talking to the gentleman at the D P W today, Fod, Mr. Fod.
Steve Fod.
Yeah. And I was asking him about what, what's it going to take to get all the utilities back there? So he said that they like five feet of cover. So he said, six-foot trenching, foot of sand, five foot of cover. And they wanted the water and utilities ten feet separate. So how does that work?
Jay, why don't you ask the next question?
Sure. They're actually showing on the site plan. So the water line is actually separated from the other gas and the electric coming up underground. So what they're going to do is they're going to direct bury the, the actual utilities underneath the actual Coburn. And so then you're going to have conduits through there, and then they're actually going to pull the actual utilities through there. And so it's going to, so it'll be waterproof. And then if anything was ever to happen, it's an easy way to actually always just redo that line. Yeah, so yeah, you're right. D P W prefers ten feet from everything with that water.
Yeah, you said that if something happens to the water, you absolutely want it separated.
Exactly.
So the other question I had, again, with the ten to eleven foot, you know, I think Jeff and I spoke briefly last night. I think I threw out the word hemlock. And after our, after the previous presentation, I may have to reconsider. So I'm, I actually spoke with the, I forgot her name, Karen. And she said she would wait back there.
She's right in the back.
Yes. You know, so I'm hoping that whatever plantings that end up on that side, that maybe we can, I can talk to a couple of different people, or we can come up with. Even though I actually like hemlocks, I may have to reconsider on that one. So I hope that Jeff and company will bear with me while I cogitate on this further.
We have the ultimate impatience.
What's that?
We have the ultimate impatience.
You're very patient with it, yes. I figured if you do this all the time, that you're very patient with it. I guess that's all I have to say.
All right. Any other comments at all?
Can I ask a, well, that fence, what color is a fence?
Cedar. Just, we'll let it, silver cedar, eventually.
Okay, so silver cedar, and I'm looking at the neighbors versus painted green.
Painted green?
I bring that up, I've seen the painted green in places and fades away. It's not natural, but I think it's something you might want to take a look at if you go around town. I think there's one on Newton Street, up on the left.
Maybe we can talk afterwards. My concern, my concern with the plantings is that basically by the time they're large enough to actually block anything, I'll, I'd probably be gone, be dead, so. So, so given the, you know, the waiting period or whatever, I'm like, well, you know, do I really want to wait for all these things to grow up? And do I need blocking here, or do I want it blocked now? So I don't know, if anybody has any thoughts on that, I think they'd like to talk me out of it. I'm happy to.
I have a fence on my property for that reason.
Okay, so where do we cut down on the fence width?
I just brought it up, the cedar fence will take a while to bleach from yellow to silver.
Six to three years.
Right, and then it's still silver and it's natural, but it's silver, which means it's light, so you'll see it. So, did somebody consider, if I were you, just drive around town? I can think of a couple of places you can take a peek and make a decision, that's all.
Well, let me just say that what we're going to do is, I think the position where we're going to schedule the review of the draft decision.
Okay, so...
So that, what we're showing in these documents is going to be cast and concrete, unless, you know, I mean, we're not going to have another go around on various issues.
I'm just trying to bring up a possible, one of the last things to consider, if we can change it from natural cedar to painted green or green at some point, or we take it off the table. I'm trying to, given a very tight situation, I'm trying to make it as, you know, as painless as possible in the future.
Yeah, and so what are you suggesting?
I'm suggesting that if we change it the next time when we do the draft from white natural cedar to a painted color, that it's done after we do it in the meeting. Can we do that without having to?
Yeah, I mean, you guys could talk about that particular condition.
Right, and it seems that everybody's open to that change.
I am. I mean, are there like stains or something?
We can have a conversation, you can make up your mind.
There are stains, something.
Get a green stain, don't get a pink.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, that way.
You know, we can, we can continue this conversation beyond this.
All right, so you guys are going to talk about that. If the next, we can review the draft decision. So, okay, are there any other questions?
He says that so happens.
No other comments? Then in that case, we'll review the draft decision on what date?
May fifteenth, right?
Yep, May fifteenth.
And it's not one where we'll take testimony, so we'll just, you're welcome to attend if you want, but we're gonna be just reviewing the language of the decision at that point and taking a vote. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we're here, we're due a proposed new house under the scenic road site plan approval by a lot, is it up? Actually, also RGAFA?
It's just over ten percent.
Okay, so is it both?
It is both, then.
Both, C and RGAFA for Colchester. Who is making the presentation, please?
We will, myself and Jeff.
All right, so you're gonna leave it off, Jay?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is the usual rules, like a half an hour, twenty minutes?
So, go real quick. So, the, here's the actual RGAFA locust map.
Behind you.
Yeah, it's behind me as well, yeah. The, so we have fourteen of butters within three hundred feet of the property. That's, so then with the, basically the highest RGAFA in that area is fifty-three hundred square feet, with a low of twenty-two hundred and seventy square feet. That puts the average around thirty-four hundred and sixty square feet. We're proposing four thousand eight hundred and forty-five, so about twelve hundred square feet over, fourteen hundred square feet over. What I did take a look at, because that includes a lot of houses that are actually on Conan. And what I did is I looked at just the Colchester address of like what that neighborhood is. And so I changed slightly, so the high on Colchester itself is fifty-seven hundred square feet, with a low of twenty-three hundred. So it put the average up to thirty-nine fifty-seven, so it bumped it up about five hundred square feet. So it's about a four thousand square foot average, and we're doing forty-eight hundred square feet. Before I go into the site plan, I'm gonna show the, just a quick look at the original submissions that the board saw out of the sidewalk. Because we actually made a good amount of revisions from that sidewalk, there's a lot of good comments. So the original designs, as I've shown here, so we have the driveway coming up through there, we had the limited work swinging around. We actually had drainage system here, we had some, a little bit of plantings in the back, we were saving a few different trees on the backside. Our limited work went all the way to the back corner, pushed out on this side over here. We had just some little areas of plantings along these sections here, we had some specimen trees on that side. We listened to the board, we listened to the actual butters, and we knew that we wanted to bring everything in for disturbance. So what we did is we saved an additional eight trees, brought in the disturbance about two thousand square feet. We reduced the disturbance by about two thousand square feet.
I'm sorry, how many trees did you save?
Eight additional trees, we saved.
Where were the trees, second side?
So we saved four trees along the driveway side, so we had talked about making, putting some plantings along the driveway. So what we did is we redid our grading along the driveway to save these four trees here. And then we saved trees on the back end, because that was another of the butter over here. So these trees were originally coming out, so now we saved these four trees back here. So we saved four in the back corner and four on this side. We brought the limited work in all the way around to total up about two thousand square feet, reduced disturbance. We've added, we had talked about the lack of abbotal transpiration with all the trees getting removed. We actually added a rain guard in here, because this is that swell that comes down through here that was gonna go towards the wetland area. So I thought that was a good spot to put that rain guard in there to get some of that abbotal transpiration out, we're trying to get back into from the nature by losing some of the trees. And then we also added in a small inlet of the trench on the downgrade side of this. So our numbers still worked prior to all this, but I know there's some concerns about, you know, with the increase in flooding in these yards back here because of the culvert area, because of the culvert that's downgraded from everything. We thought that, try to be a good neighbor and actually add some additional drainage to the project. And also, I'll let Jeff talk about it, but he's bumped up all the trees, added some additional trees as per the comments from the town. And we cut a couple more cross-sections so we can get a better idea of how everything lays out with all that.
Have you cut the masing of the house at all?
The house, the house hasn't changed.
Or there's no garages?
It's still three, it's still three. So we looked, I looked back and we had talked, you know, and I started to look back and I'm like, I really can't remember when we actually did for new construction over the last four, five years, and when we did something that wasn't three-car garage or more. Like a lot of times you see the two attached and two detached, or three attached and two detached. So for new construction in Weston, it's really, that's like mostly the norm that's going in for a three-car garage. And I know the board is hoping to kinda bring down the house a little bit.
It's a tight site.
Yeah, it's tight, it's, so we have, you know, we have the setback at that corner there, you have the twenty-five foot notice curve there. But what, the way I looked at it was, even if this was cut down a little bit, this, we have to keep the septic up here because of the, you know, because of the buffer zone. And then we had brought in this actual limited work as we had discussed, we actually brought this all in, so that's where a lot of our two thousand square foot change is. And so we actually did some of the stuff that, you know, we had talked about trying to reduce the disturbance on this side. So even if we took this out, I'm still disturbing all this. So I understand the idea of trying to, think of, let's try to reduce the mass, see if we can reduce some of the disturbance, but it won't really reduce much. It won't actually reduce anything if we were to take that bay off, in essence.
And just shrinking the whole house by a couple feet all around?
We did, we changed the RGAFA, but it's not gonna really change the actual disturbance of the site, because it's, because what happens, you know, it might, I'm not gonna say one, like it probably have a little bit of effect, but we're still stuck with having the septic on this side.
Right.
So this, so this still is all gonna be disturbed. And then you still have, you know, so if we were brought in up here, you know, maybe you can pull it in a little bit on that side. But I think it's, it's, as we have it now, we were, like I said, we were able to save additional trees, reduce the disturbance, reduce the actual amount of fill-in site, and still add additional drainage to the site.
If you skip to that house to the north, it's...
Over the septic field?
No, the one, Ken Bennett's old house.
Oh, right, oh, that's...
You know, the screening for that is, looks like it's pretty minimal right now.
Yeah, we'll let you, all this left Jeff talk about, they actually enhanced it. I just show what else, because it's just a little hatch, right, so you're not gonna see the actual, they have, he has a couple, we did a new cross-section all the way back. So they added the GIS contours in there, added the house building back there.
Yeah, you can see it from, you can actually see it from Colchester.
Yeah.
You can actually see that house.
Oh, yeah.
So, I, it's hard, forgive me, but it's hard for me to believe that a little row of trees is actually gonna make a difference when you're looking through a whole yard full of trees and you can still see that house.
That's, yeah, that's part of the problem that we have, right, is the, a lot of the trees we have are all...
It's all trunks.
Yeah, it's all trunks.
So again, so masing down lower, definitely.
You wanna put the landscape?
Yeah, we're ready to talk about landscape.
Can we put that septic in the back, that cannot come closer to the house?
It's gotta be twenty feet off the house.
And that's twenty feet?
So the tanks have to be ten feet, so it's close to twenty feet, it's probably just a little bit away out. And so we have to be, we have to be outside the buffer zone, and then we have to be twenty feet away from the foundation.
This just seems to be a good spot there that you could pull it in and keep more cover between you and Conan, but I guess not, yeah.
My name's Jeff, project landscape architect with McDowell. Would it be easier to look at the boards or the, I know one of the previous ones, we wanted to look at the...
Yeah, it's better to look at the...
Trying to do it from the, okay, let me just, like Jay.
We've got some notes here that I probably won't be able to read from over there.
So this, is the pointer still available? So this is the tree removal plan, so this shows the number of trees being removed. So like Jay mentioned, one of the things we've looked at since the last time we, we were at the sidewalk is the additional eight trees that we were able to save. So most of the existing trees on this site, as those of you who know that walked it are mature pine. In, in that set, in various stages of sort of decay, I would call it. One of the things we looked at, just to sort of see, and this isn't a slide, this was just an exhibit that we put together late today. But the, essentially, we quantified, so we've got a hundred and twenty-six total trees on the site. The total number of trees being removed is fifty-three, so that just kinda gives an idea of the numbers. We've identified of those fifty-three, thirty-two of them are literally sort of dead or dying, or what we would consider normally hazard trees. So it's just a point of context here, when we start looking, if we look closer at the tree removal, kinda what we're talking about. The, so the net ends up being, if we look at what would be considered healthy trees to be removed, it's twenty-one. And the total number of trees that we're proposing to put back is thirty-eight. So I thought that was sort of an interesting and useful sort of context if we're looking at overall trees on the site that was being removed. Go to L2, please. So this is the landscape and lighting plan, and the proposed plantings are actually on a separate sheet. But what this plan shows is the white area around the house would be, would be what's gonna be lawn area. There's a sort of a stippled sort of hatch that shows up here, some around the back, some over here. And what that is, is gonna be sort of a restoration, seed planting, those are areas that are disturbed and graded. And like Jay mentioned, we've reduced and minimized that, but those aren't gonna be lawn areas, and so that's how we're gonna treat those.
So did that get mowed or sied or something, or they're just, I'm just...
It's natural. We can show you pictures of it or show you kind of a...
Is it grasses?
It's a mixture of grasses, perennials, and just sort of wild flowery things that do well in this shady, sort of shady environment. It's used often, like I said, for erosion, this one actually will tolerate some wetness and some shade. And we've used it successfully, again, otherwise, if we can't put lawn back, we just end up with, with kind of these weed messes.
But what she was asking is maintaining a meadowy type semi-wild area.
There's no maintenance.
You don't, but how do you keep the seedlings and saplings from growing up and taking over? Buckle on and everything else.
So, all right, and so naturally, so we, I guess we could, I guess we could come in there once a year with a brush hog and knock it down, but...
It's just a mow, it's like...
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't need brush hog, unless you wait for ten years.
Exactly. So, I think that's...
Okay, I guess, I'm just, is it going back to like pine straw, which is what it was? But then you're saying you can't do that, call the pine, it'd be taken out.
Well, I suppose if we, I guess the question is, if we waited long enough to let it naturalize, is that what you're asking, I guess it will.
Yeah.
If like, if we, if we mow it annually, it would be more meadowy, kind of in between lawn and woodland?
This is, this one and the one before that with the perennial meadow beforehand, I mean, I've seen it done, but I've also seen it look scrubby and scrappy and dreadful and takes and everything else. I don't know the answer yet, I'm sort of feeling around to get an idea.
Okay.
So I'm not yay or nay saying it, I'm just uncertain about it, I guess.
Okay. We can look at, I guess, other ways to kinda treat the disturbed areas.
Yeah, I mean, I don't wanna see a giant thing of mulch.
Yeah, me either.
That we all agree on, so I don't, I don't know where the answer is. So I mean, continue with this until somebody says, work for whatever reason, okay?
What I see is quite a bit of grading around the northeast and northern parts of the property.
Here, Al?
Yeah, right there, and then going around to the north side of the site. And I also see in the same area, a lot of trees that you say are being preserved. And I'm wondering how those two actually work together.
It's not clear from this, I'll admit. If you take, if you take a close look at sort of where the contours are, Al, and what the actual limit of work would be...
Is that the one?
Yeah, so...
Take a look here, will there be anywhere to be in closer?
Yeah, I think if you, to your point, so the contour lines are under here and they're faded. So really, if we had overlaid Jay's limit of work line, you know, it'd be something like this, just outside that stipple. And so everything up in here, these are supplemental up underneath. And here's the window that you were talking about, Al, between the current plantings.
Well, the window, it's always...
Well, yeah, that's what I mean, it's just anywhere in here, this is just an obvious, so that we've addressed with additional...
You can see, actually, you can see the grading up there, so you can see how those trees up top.
So there's two...
There's no grading around those trees? See, they have the left side.
Well, I mean, there's, what's, what's missing from, what's always missing is sort of the under storage. That gets, that's gonna get cleaned, so, you know, especially in this area, that's just gone. So the only thing you have left are a few right on the edge, and then you've got this, it's just gonna be a bank. And then there are things scattered around the property line. So this is gonna be pretty open, and I'm worried that that's gonna be pretty open from Ken Bennett's house up, the next house up. Even if you plant some stuff in to try to block it, it's, you know, it's, it's the site.
Right, it just looks like you're in unmanaged wood loss with all these dead trees and bases and everything else. And it's like you're gonna preserve some of the unmanaged wood loss, and then it's just...
Scatter some stuff along it, it will really look more... To be frank, that what's driving the bus is the walkout facility. That's what's driving the bus, isn't it?
It's what I, it's, on this side, this cut back here, yeah, like that cut back there on that side, it's, what happens, because of your, no matter what you place it, you're always gonna end up...
I've read a couple of drawings in there.
Oh, no, 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 I was just saying, no matter what, because of that slope this way, to sit without having, so you're not gonna fill that side, I mean, you're always gonna end up with some kind of walkout on that side of the house.
Why is this whole thing back here, why couldn't it be up?
The twenty, because you're the...
Because we have setback?
The setback and the twenty-five foot notice curve.
How about moving it just by a little bit? No, I mean, I mean, because he's right, and...
That's driving the bus, I mean, yeah, I mean, you may be coming down a little bit, but you're not coming down a full floor. I'm just saying, you know?
Well, we're at, we're at existing grade on this side, and then this is our cut here to get to that.
So, why couldn't this be shifted?
So you have the twenty-five foot notice curve, so you can, if you stop pulling it, yeah.
Yeah, so what happens?
If we stop pulling this floor this way, the...
Can you rotate it?
You didn't wanna try to, like, turn it?
The other way.
Turn it, turn it like that, towards the, kick it that way.
I don't know.
So, so, yeah.
It's just...
And is that the basement that basically is under, is it right now unfinished, or is that a finished basement?
I think there's a small portion, just this section.
It's a classic five, five pounds of sugar in a three-pound bag.
Yeah.
You know, I get it about the three-car garage and what everybody expects in Weston, but then you've gotta, you can't just ram it into the site, you know?
What if you were to take the garage and rotate it so you get more of it out, and you attach it to the end bay that way? And that way, the whole thing shrinks up a little bit, and you get actually rather nice little courtyard entrance zone, and it consolidates the footprint a little bit better.
You had looked at that originally, but our fear was that coming off of the scenic road, all of a sudden you're extending the viewpoint through the septic field as well to up. Now you have a garage on this side, so it's creating more impact on the scenic road.
I guess I would assume you'd come in from this side to the garage.
Yeah.
So you basically, I would assume the garage would be a one-story. So you, only one story, and I can't remember what the roof line is, one-story shed roof, which is not, to my mind, I'd rather see that than come up the driveway and see three garage doors. I mean, that's always been my hang-up, I always think it's more gracious to see the house.
He's talking about the view from the back road.
Right, right, but we're gonna get that view no matter what, right?
Because we're, you know, like you keep saying, you cannot see the septic field.
What you're really gonna see is that back elevation.
We're gonna see a lot of this.
We're gonna see that course over here.
That guy knows me.
I know, I know.
Do we wanna put this up on the easel and look at the architect? Well, actually, if I may, just... If I, if I may, just kind of quickly, just look through the rest of the landscape.
Sure.
I think there's two or three more slides.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you're assuming it's sort of like part of the area you want to sound like it's part of-
The, the, um, the, these are the, the cut sheets of the lighting, these are all dark sky fixtures. We did have a couple fixtures that, at the sidewalk, that were not, and we've revisited and made sure that everything here is compliant with that. On the previous page, there was a, there was a summary, and I think our total lumen count between the house and the landscape is just a little over fifteen thousand.
So the ones right around the house, the, the front porch, this looks like there's a pendant and two sconces?
Correct.
Okay, and where's the pendant? Where's your, where's your, your cut of the-
Is it under the, uh?
No, no, I know where it is, but where, what is the-
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Can we go back to the, to the fixtures? So it's not L, that's actually been replaced, and we simply have, I think, two, guys jump in if I'm wrong here, two sconces on the front, two sconces on the back, and then just some recessed. We don't have the, the pendant.
So the sconces are the lanterns that are at the bottom?
This one.
A two?
A two.
A two. And L two is a pole lamp at the, at the end of the driveway.
And there's a few intermittent up the drive.
Oh, a few intermittent?
Yeah, if you look at the purple circles on, on the, the plan, that, they don't show up here. I think there's, they're pretty clear on that plan.
How long is the driveway? Hundred feet? Is it a place where you're liable to get lost if you, if you try to drive up at night? Why, why three?
We just, we like the aesthetic of it.
You like the aesthetic?
Thank you, we can, oh, we can go ahead, there's, I think there's, let's see, one more sheet after the-
So, so the question, do you need all those pole lights? I think that was a question. We get, I'm sorry.
So again, we're well under-
Are you well under the lumen?
We're well under the, the lumen, yeah.
But, but that doesn't necessarily mean that, that any light fixture is good.
Right. The number is right. Where's the first one? Is it right by the front of the driveway? How about the?
One, two, three.
So there's one at the entrance, one at the courtyard.
If, if, if there are two there, you're going to get lost.
No, they don't have headlights.
And, and this is the, the, the flashlights.
Right, right. It sounds like street lighting. I think you might need your post.
One, two, three.
They always, like, gosh, unless we need to take two between them.
Between.
Yeah.
That's what we usually, one, which, between.
Those are just recessed lights.
Yeah. Between the, the doors, that's-
In my case, well?
Yeah.
It's not like it's like, really a driveway.
If this were a long line and dry, but it's a hundred feet long.
Anyway, um, I'm, I'm back at, or-
We go back to the, to the, to the, go ahead.
I, I, I'm back to the drawing.
Yes. Go back to the house, yeah.
All right, I just wanted to finish literally the two, the two slides here, just to close the, so we've got, we've got the proposed planting plan. Again, it's kind of blurry on this view. This is, it's a very shady site. We've got a mixture of hemlock, which, which I heard from, from the previous. I like them, and, and-
We all really like them. We don't plant them anymore.
And they, they do come clean, they, they come clean from the nurseries, so we have, again, this is all shade, understory, so we've got hemlock, we've got a lot of rhododendron max, a lot of mountain laurel. We're trying to use evergreen stuff that's suitable up underneath here to try to address, again, the, the conit, we have, we have this corridor. We did add, uh, uh, six hemlocks along this back row. This, again, was one of the main concerns going up to, to the gentleman to the north here. Uh, we do have screening that comes down along this side as well. So we, one of the comments, I think, at the sidewalk is, some of the screening trees were lined up, and just from an aesthetic standpoint on the plan at least, so we've kind of loosened things up, and we did have a net increase in screening since we last, since we last talked.
What are the, what are the sizes of the tr- of the screen?
So the largest ones are the hemlocks, and those are ten to twelve.
Ten to twelve.
Yep.
They're going to look like bushes.
I think there was, there was also, Kim had sent us some comments this afternoon regarding, I, I think, again, it was, it was a good point, Kim, it was regarding the, and maybe this is just a graphic thing too, was, was the size of the, of the symbols of the hemlock trees relative to what we all know they'll be. And this is just a drafting standard, really, is that we've got them spaced out about ten to twelve feet apart, which, if you're putting in ten to twelve-foot hemlocks, and you want any sort of screening in the short term, that's about all you want to spread them out. And so that's kind of, that's how we developed these quantities, and that's how we sort of developed the symbolism here. The, um, obviously, we could have spread them out and staggered them and kind of moved them around, but I think, I think that was a good comment from Kim, and I wanted to point out from a perception standpoint, if they look like little circles. Um, the, the other point that, that she made was the view from the corner of Conant and Colchester, and again, I, I think going all the way back to some of our early discussions of sort of largely leaving this, this pine grove alone, Kim recognized that there is lack, there is, it, it does lack some understory to some degree. And again, our, our thing was that we just, we just, we zipped up the limit of work, and we just weren't disturbing, or proposing to do anything in that corner, but I think, um-
Yeah, I think you'd have to select and trim some from out there. I mean, it might have been no disturb, but I think you could have better result, but is that the view would feel like?
Well, I mean, so, my, and I missed the sidewalk because I was out of town, but I went to the site, and my comment after visiting was a few different things. One, um, sort of the plugging in of the gaps in the buffer with solid hedge of one type of plant seemed a bit unresponsive to the environment. Um, and your symbols are small, I mean, those are reading as like, you know, six or seven diameter hemlocks, which we know are not going to grow like that. But I think adjusting sizes and potentially species to reflect what's happening on the site right now, which is a variety of different plants. And what's, what I think that the board is responding to is that there's a lot of trees there now, and it's a wooded site, and it, it has to be cleared in some regard to have the new house put in. But it's sort of like buffer of proposed trees in gaps where there's non-existing trees, and then ground cover. And you've got a little bit of understory in there, but there's not-
We have like fifty-plus rhododendron in, in mountain laurel.
But again, like, they're not, they're sort of in these clusters, they're not, they're not sort of plugged in to create a more natural looking overall product. Because when you go to the site, and what I think is striking is that on that corner there, Colchester and Conant, you can see right through it, right? Because everything is like tall.
It's an untended wood.
Yeah, and so I think there's a way to break some of those mountain laurels and rhodies and such, and even by burnouts and, I mean-
Some deciduous stuff.
Buffer, I don't think has to be a hundred percent evergreen, we have to, you want this to succeed into a, the healthy ecosystems, and the rest of the plants will thrive.
The northeast corner is really open.
The, yeah, you're right.
You can really look right into the site from there, that's, you know, it's, that whole northern border and northeast corner, I, I'm sorry, Kim, but I just have a hard time seeing a row of-
Right.
Ten-foot-high hemlocks, uh, doing the job.
Right.
Are those, is that the end of your slides?
The only thing we haven't looked at is the site prosections, which we could put up just real quickly, because I think they're useful and important. Did you get that? That was a late slide. Uh, so the, so the top, the top one here is-
I'm having a hard time reading that. Looks like the building is floating up in the air.
Well, so what we're showing, Al, this is, this is a cut line that literally happens right in front of the house. So if we look at, you know, we've got, there's, over here would be the retaining wall along the no disturb, the wetlands down here. So we've taken, we've taken a slice right along the front here.
Okay.
So it's showing, obviously, the fill condition, and then-
Is that Conant with those little automobiles?
Uh, so this, this is Conant here, and this is, uh, Mrs., uh-
David.
Uh, Mrs. Davidson's here. And we've got the no disturb here, edge of wetland in the property line here. So basically, all this remains untouched here, shows here. And it does show, uh, some of the proposed sort of scaling deciduous trees here, some red maples, some dogwoods, and some other trees in front of the house.
Those are shown about twenty-five feet high, is that right?
Well-
After ten years, maybe.
So I guess I'm confused, the comment before was the, the symbols were too small, so I, I, I would look for a direction on how we want to look at this stuff.
You're confused. One was a plan view, where you're showing the, the, the diameter of the circles for the plans, this one is an elevation view, where you're showing mature trees. What's confusing about that?
Again, I would just look for a direction on, on, I mean, some of this is illustrative.
What does it look like when you see it, you know? This is, yeah, sure, it's going to be, you know, if you look ahead in the future, fifteen, twenty years, maybe. Um, what about the perimeter planning signs?
This year?
That's shown at what?
So tho- those are shown at twelve to fourteen feet, which we're proposing ten to twelve-foot trees.
So those are accurate.
No, relative to the, to the, this is to scale, in the horizontal scale.
Right.
So that would be the hem, the, you know, hemlock in there.
So some are today and some are sometime in the future.
Yeah, so the deciduaries in front of the house are, they're supposed to be-
There's some red maple, there's some dogwood, those, those will be three to three-and-a-half inch caliber trees, probably ten to twelve feet tall.
So pack oles at ten to twelve, so just a little tiny bit bigger than the little evergreen that's shown over to the side.
So something like that.
So that is very deceptive.
Again, not intentionally here, I just want to be clear that we've looked at these sort of renderings for years together.
Yeah.
So why can't the house be pushed down a few feet? I don't understand why it's-
Yeah, the walkout base now is-
Groundwater.
It's floating.
So you have the, you have the wet, you have the wetland right there. And so that we have to make sure that, that we're not, you know, creating a, you know, some pump that's going to be discharged all the time, so we want to have the, the basement slab high enough that it's not going to be around the ground with a table.
So what's the height of slab two, the bottom of the raft or in that house? I mean, if we've got like a twelve-foot, uh, high basement, so it'll go on in there?
No, it's a, it's a nine-foot foundation pool. So finished and everything, it's going to be seven, seven and a half.
What if you didn't have a basement?
You'd still have to pool.
The walkout basement is driving it.
And the walkout basement is driving it, right? Plus it gives it, doesn't it look like this three stories behind, and, not, not quite yet. Soon.
But if, even if this wasn't, if you had envisioned, if even if this wasn't a, a walkout on that side, because it's still the existing grade, anybody who has a basement's going to want to keep it on the ground.
What if it's an oval basement? That's what he just asked.
Oh, I know, I-
We're talking about bulkhead, I mean, bulkhead is an access into basement without having, you know, nine-foot sliders out there. I mean, what is, what is-
Yeah, but the, the new film is coming into town, are they going to want no basement?
I don't know. We're talking about-
Six eight.
We're talking about a slight level as opposed to what they're going to want. You know what I mean?
Six foot eight inches. So why do you need nine?
It's not nine, it's, it's, it's nine for four, so by the time you're done, it's about, what, seven foot five, seven foot six.
So why can't you do it to the minimum? I mean, everybody's, it's a big chuckle, but I mean, why can't it be done to the, I mean, no, people want a basement, because we all love the old house, and the ground and the floor, it's great. And so, um, but why can't you have it be a much lower, you know, ceiling? I mean, it's all sort of driven by this big mass underground, so you can have these big sliders. And really, a lot of houses in, in Weston have bulkheads, you know, going down into their normal-sized, normal overhead.
Yeah, and you, you would actually have that if this wasn't a sloping lot that goes that, you know, it's, you're talking about a twenty, you know, or a twenty-foot grade change from Conant down to the actual grade, and so if you didn't have, if you had a, a lot that had a six-foot grade change, you'd have a bulkhead, because you would have everything, the whole basement would be sunk. But you still would be having the same elevation.
You're confusing me. But I, I just don't under-
The elevation would be sunk because you're trying to put the same house in the-
Well, we're saying, we have a sloping site, so that no matter, so either, you're either, if you want to try to get rid of it, even if you did a faucet wall, you're going to drop, drop that house to try to make that-
No, Jay, it's possible to actually design a house that, that works with the contours. You, you don't need to actually build a platform. You could do, you can actually do it.
Well, I don't-
I know.
But you could.
I mean, it has-
I, we've, we've worked with those before, I'm just saying, as a, if you're looking at-
Yeah, but you, you understand, what, what we're reacting to here is the impacts of what is being proposed-
Yeah.
In a very tight site, is, you know, you, you guys know it, you're, you're, you're limited everywhere, you're limited where you put the septic, you're limited because of the, of the wetlands.
Yeah.
You, you know, you're limited from all kinds of directions, to the water table.
So I think a good question on the table is that, are you guys open-minded in designing the house that follows the grade rather than it's on a platform?
Um, I, I think to Jay's point, it's a little bit, to get the grades, it's either going to be a cut or a fill, and there's a natural cut right now, so I, I'm not convinced that the walkout basement is the driving issue here, maybe I'm just looking at it differently.
Maybe we need to look at the architecture.
Yeah, maybe we do.
Are you done with the landscape?
Is this the last slide?
Wait, we need to look at the other section.
This is the last slide, there's two more section views here. The second one here is zoom out just a little bit. On the right is Colchester, and this cut line goes along this side of the house, all the way up to the north, all the way up to the abutter up at one eighteen, Conant. So it shows horizontally what the separation looks like. Again, it shows screening this side from Mrs. Davidson's view. In front of the house there, it shows this retaining wall coming off the front foundation. And again, it shows some of the scaling trees and screening trees, and sort of how we're dealing with some of these sightlines.
If you're in the house up the hill, you're looking over those hemlocks right at the back wall of the, of the new house. And I can just see, you can see where the sightlines are from the second story of the house up the hill, right over those trees into the back wall. Just are.
And the next elevation?
And this one is a view, kind of from the opposite perspective, we've got Colchester Road on the left-hand side down here, the abutter here, and this is a view as, as though we were on Conant looking at this eleva- this side elevation of the house. We've got hemlock here, and in here, we're constrained. This is the super narrow area between the leach field and the existing stone wall, and[1704.82] This is the super narrow area between the leach field and the existing stone wall, and we just don't feel comfortable putting any sizable trees in there. So we're kind of trying to deal with this the best we can with something evergreen that eventually will get massing and get up above the sightline, at least the people driving and walking by.
Aren't there some existing mature trees that are staying along that?
There, there are, but, but they're, they're sort of behind the, the point of this perspective. Uh, but to answer your question, yeah, in, there's, there's a number of pines in the right of way that are, that are gonna remain.
Because I mean, right now it feels like, you know, it feels like, you know, somebody's surrounded by munchkins, you know, it gets...
I understand.
That's why they're...
I mean, they're not, yeah.
If you go, I don't know, those ghosted trees are the ones behind it or the ones...
Those are in the background in this particular view, yeah.
Because I mean, that's what's gonna give it scale. The, the house itself looks like it did drop from the sky and went flop. You know, and it's basically, it's more of a landing pad than it is a site.
Look at that driveway from, from south to north.
And it, it just doesn't feel, you know, it, it, it's ill fitting, I guess, it's, it's... I'm not convinced that this is the only style house that go, that'll go on this site. I'm just, it's like somehow this got to be the plan and now we're gonna make sure this fits here, no matter what.
We're gonna engineer everything to... Versus the other way around.
And it's almost impossible to do this and take a look at this, and so... Um, I, I just, I'm not an architect, but I don't think there's just one answer to this site. I don't think that there's just one thing that has to be done.
Right, architecture.
Architecture.
Yeah, with that, architecture.
Yeah.
I don't know if you guys have this on a slide, this one?
You might have it in our child, I don't think I have it at right now, so I can't hold on.
Yeah, do, do we have that on the slides?
I can see if I have it.
That would be crazy.
Should I buy the, the first PDF?
It's very realistic.
Wait, I'll just...
It is a very, absolutely. It is a very challenging site.
Sure, so everyone just...
Because you picked something easy to do, right?
Yeah. Sure, so I mean, we can talk about the, the house here, I'm just introducing myself, I'm Joe Sampaoli. My brother Jake and I are the owners, applicants, and will be the builders of this proposed house at five Colchester. Um, excited to be here, so, um, this is the house that we'd like to build, um, it's a, as far as Weston goes, um, it has certain features that, that are common in town, so, um, it's colonial style with the shingle architecture on the front. Um, you know, we, we've talked a little bit about the garage, but, you know, that, that really is a must-have for people who are buying in Weston today. It's, that's what the families want, that's what the buyers want.
Is this a prefabricated house?
No.
Are you the architect?
Shane Structures is who?
In, in terms of prefabricated in?
Well, is it pre-made?
Um, but the plan set is done by, it's a plan set.
It's a plan set.
Okay, so it's a standardized plan set. Okay, so you're, 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 you bought a standardized set of plans and now you're putting them on the site.
So, great.
Yeah, and the, and the elevation in the middle at the bottom is the one facing the house to the north.
Right, correct, with the deep sliders.
I think what people were saying is, it was probably fairly inexpensive to pick up the standardized plans set. It might be worthwhile thinking about actually hiring somebody to, to, to design a house that fits on the site as opposed to buying a set of plans and then seeing if they'll, you can stick them on the site somehow. That's, that's, I think, that's what we were trying to communicate.
It could even be a more valuable house.
Yes.
Would definitely be.
Right, because I can see you going and picking and saying, oh, they like, you know, they like big windows, they like shutters, they like little, they like peaked roofs. But when you put together architecture and a home and all those good words, it's not just a list of make sure you've got three of these or four of those. And, you know, this is a beautiful site, it's a beautiful part of Weston. Um, it deserves something that, 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 that is better situated to who it is and what the, what the site is. Um, and I, you know, I think, I think it can be done.
I concur.
Sure, so, um, it, this might be helpful for the board, this, we don't have a large printout, I have a couple smaller printouts. This is just putting the, uh, the footprint of this house kind of on to the site, um, in an approximate scale and location. Just to see how it kind of fits in with the neighborhood, because that was something that we did actually give considerable thought to. Um, you know, how, how kind of this house did it with the neighborhood. Um, so it's, you know, it, it, it's, it's an efficient house as far as kind of, you know, the floor plan. Um, you know, it doesn't have a lot of superfluous architectural features.
Right, I mean, I think we, we have the picture to, uh, oops.
That's good.
Spoke too soon.
Yeah, thanks very much. Uh, is that, is that it on the presentation, guys?
Oh, yeah.
Sure, okay. Kim, Dave, what do you guys want to, before you leave your comments? Dave, what, what's the story on the site engineering?
I have to look at stormwater, because you actually did a little bit more modification than, than a day allows, so... I mean, it was, it was okay before, I mean, that piece of it is, is a solvable puzzle, you know, but...
You know, this is one of the things I don't understand about this neighborhood. That we, that we solve every one of these houses that comes in this neighborhood, so it's gonna be fine. And yet, every time we see a new house being proposed, their, people's heads are exploding about the water problems in the neighborhood. So, I mean, I, I don't understand this, there seems to be something disconnected between what we think is gonna happen and what actually, what people are telling us is actually happening, happening. And...
In a micro sense, which is just these individual lots, as we look them, look at them, we, they make marginal improvements over the stormwater. In a macro sense, this neighborhood has been a very large issue that's not...
Very large and growing.
That, um, is beyond any one lot to fix. You know, if we were to, you know, dig a hole to China and not build a house here, just let the water fall in, but you still would get the same issues that we have. It's, it, you know, it's, it's that culvert under, um...
Sears.
Sears, yeah.
It's, it's turning into the universal villain, the, the culvert under Sears, but...
But no one has any power.
But what happens usually is that you get rid of a lot of the transpiration possibility, you know, necessarily, by introducing the, the construction. And I, that's an unquantifiable variable, you know, at least that's, that's what seems to be the, sort of the, the situation that, that, that it, it's hard to feed the influence of the, of mature, the, the, um, impact of mature trees on the di-, on the dynamic of stormwater and how, and how it happens and where it goes. Um, but in this neighborhood, there've been just a whole lot, there's been a lot of clearing over the years, you know, one lot at a time. And I'm not sure that, that troubles that people are having are all attributable to one culvert under Sears Road.
No, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it's all the culvert, I would, I'd also say like structurally, this, you know, bits and pieces of this neighborhood, or maybe pieces that never should have been built, predating even the planning board.
I agree.
Right, like, you know, like, you know, you know, this swampy metal road probably shouldn't have houses on it, right, like, you know, what if... So, so, you know, there, it, it, this is more of an aqua problem. On the individual lots we look at, we always make sure we leave them from our perspective, which again is more of a, doesn't deal with the aesthetics of it, but that it's a better place.
Okay.
So, I, I just want to say something, when I see this, it, to me, it actually emphasizes the fact, and I still didn't understand why we can't do this, that this house should be moved forward, because number one, it would align better with the other houses on the street, but also, it, it wouldn't create, um, it would give you a much greater buffer in the, in the northeast and northern edge, which is what it desperately needs. So why can't you move it forward up to the site?
Yeah.
On the site?
The, the notice curve, as you move forward, the notice curve pops out, so that, so basically the...
Can you show that here?
Yeah.
Just up on the site plans?
Yeah.
Which one is that?
Actually, if you were to the site, if you were to the site plans, they'll see it.
Engineering plans.
Yeah, so if you zoom in, like right here. So what happens is, so if we move it forward, you can, if I move it forward, uh, a little bit, it's this, it's this bulb right here.
Can't you move it to the right as well?
What happens is our setback line is right here.
Where is the setback line?
It's right along this edge, so if you go, go back one day, it'll, it'll go to the floppery.
I think you'd still have room to move it to the right and move it...
Or rotated.
So here's, here's your setback.
Or, or a different...
Yeah, so you, so you can just move it down and to the right.
Yeah.
I don't understand. Yeah, that would be an impossibility, but that moves it away from the whole back side of the property. It also lowers it off to the side, because the grades are lower towards the front.
What happens? Well, it's, well, it's, it's, it's the slope this way, so that, so it's, the, the grades won't change, I mean, it's still gonna be the same, but we get nine...
But it's lower towards the front of the site, right?
This area, it's, it's actually, it's a constant slope down this way. So it's, it's high grade here and then slopes this way, so if this, you know, this, this, the contours go, yeah, so as we come forward, we're still gonna be in the same grade ranges.
So, what's the good forward is, it, let's face it, it means the driveway gets really steep. That's what it means.
Because, I mean, this is what...
Well, yes, because if they keep the...
Yeah, but I've seen much... Yes, it's quite right. But, yeah, it's a lot more discussion, but maybe we should go to this.
I mean, this is one seventy-one here, it's one sixty-seven.
Those are proposed grades, yeah, those are timed, yeah, so that, but it's the, if you look, yeah, you put up the existing conditions.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
So you can, here's the contour, you can see the contours here? Going like that, so that's, that's, they're basically slope like that.
Yeah, Steve's an architect, so he can't resist designing. Okay, and we, we have our, if, if we, if we have any comments from the audience, maybe now's the time. Yes.
Terry's from Fifty-Fish and Hill Road, although it's fifty-nine Conan, so I'm diagonally across from you. I appreciate the fact that you've really set on this design, your house. Personally, I don't, I think that the mass is too large for the lot. I, and I think while new houses in Weston have three-car garages, um, I think you have to take into consideration the proportion of the garage to the house. If you look at the site plan, the garage looks to be about a third the mass of the, of the house, which is, to me, out of proportion. I think you could site the house better if you had an architect who's on it for the site. You might orient it, as Al suggested, toward Conan Road or even angled it, or, but if you reduce the mass and, and simplify the house, I think it would fit into the lot, the wooded lot in a more natural...
Right, yes.
I'm not an architect, I'm an architect, I'm a green gypsy. Um, if you're worried about getting an architect, get an architect, every penny that you spend, you will recoup in the end value. This site, this house plan here, there's three or four of them that have been on the market with a similar party for about six to nine months, that are just sitting there. You want, Weston buyers want something that's unique and has character, and you're gonna spend the same amount, and it's tailored to the actual lot, not something like this. Thank you, that's just my opinion.
Anyone else? Yes, way, way in the back? You, where in the back?
Judy David, I'm next door. I would like to see a smaller house, the garage tipped, and pull it forward, and I would like to see, get rid of whatever it is that's downstairs. It's only gonna add to old pond pond, which is attractive. But it's, we're swimming in it now, and all you're gonna do is have a bigger, more water runoff. It's gonna be just sermon upon... And so...
Thank you, sir.
Uh, Nathaniel Healer, the one eighteen Conan Road, I, I own the, the old historic house of my wife and my two small children. Um, I just want to say that I, look, I, uh, I'm very proud to own that house. Uh, it has a historic restriction on it, I'm very proud to be the steward of that asset into its three-hundredth year, which is coming up. Um, I have a few issues with this, uh, house as it's proposed right now, first is historic. It just does not fit with the streetscape and with the history of this area. I think the scale of this five thousand foot house is just totally out of whack with mine, which is, look, it was built three hundred years ago. It's a very small house, but it's beautiful in its simplicity, right? And I think it's really overshadowed by, by this massive five thousand foot house, which is really, I mean, if you come and walk the site, it's right in front of my land. It's about twenty feet from my meadow. My son can't even have a swing set in that meadow because of the historic restriction. If these guys want to put a five thousand square foot house right in front, it just doesn't work, right? That's not the idea of this area. Um, the other thing I want to say is just like, guys, you're force-feeding me the backside of a three-story house, right? It is so utilitarian, you were asking me to stare at this walkout basement with virtually no screening, no cover, nothing to break the view lines. Like, I'm almost offended by you asking me to do that and not having, um, somebody else share that burden with me. Um, not to mention that basically every room in the back of your house looks directly in that bedroom, okay? Um, finally, that's the fact that you downloaded these plans off the internet, I mean, I'm sorry, but are you serious? It just shows how, how detached you are with this area and its historic significance. I think if you spent time looking more deeply in this neighborhood, reading more deeply about its history, you would have realized, that's not the move, guys. I mean, come on.
Okay, anybody else? Yes, sir.
I, uh, I work with Judy David, and, uh, we've been studying this...
What's your name, sir?
I'm Charles Bork, I build houses, uh, and by looking at the plan, uh, with the garages the way they are, uh, on the elevation plan, but the three-car garage like that, it's just, it's too much, it's too much house for what's happening on that street. The other thing, and I, I, I hear the board as well, and, you know, here in the neighborhood back here, that, um, the house itself is set too far back. If there's a way that could take the garage and turn it like an L shape against Conan Road, pull the house forward and simplify the house, it's, right now, it's, it doesn't fit with the, with the street at all. And to get the plans on the internet, to buy the plans, like, it doesn't make any sense. They gotta have guys, they gotta have somebody that can draw this plan that's done right. This isn't right.
Anyone else with a comment?
I have a letter that kind of reiterates the size of the house, can I read it?
Sure.
Okay, so from Susan Lucetti, one hundred Conan Road, um, she wants the planning board to consider two possible changes. Re-running the drive entrance is necessary to stay from the largest deciduous trees. Um, showing the plan as a twenty-four inch, or twenty-four inch ship on the plan, and then reducing the size of the proposed building by twenty-five percent, bringing it with an army of the existing, or existing structures in the property. She wants these, uh, requests to be, she understands that there's a profit for the developer, but, um, to mitigate new structures impacting the loss of double grants as well as the sightlines for the existing neighbors should be considered. Um, as the developer, although clearly, uh, certainly reputable, has no interest in the neighborhood or the town, I respect that, ask the consideration given to surrounding the boulders and neighbors, thank you.
Okay, we have one more question now. Yes, yes, sir.
Oh, I'm, I've been authorized to speak to my wife. Her name is Carol Martin, she's the owner of the house, I'm the tenant. I had a, uh, two questions and comments. The first comment was, I thought the three-car garage didn't fit with the, of all the boulders around. The last house that the planning board approved at one oh-three Conan Road, which is about the same square footage as this, has two-car garage. And so I see the argument that, that, that three cars is normal, it's an interesting, it's a question.
You were the engineer on that too, Jay.
No.
No, I think that, I think the one he's talking about is the modern move.
No, one oh-three is, is one of those place like ranch houses.
Oh, okay, because the, the previous...
Jeffrey Brown's house.
Two, two-car garage. Just the set, just saying. All right, sorry, go ahead.
There's a couple of times we directed mainly at the screening. There was a nice argument about the percentage of pine trees that are removed that are in trouble. But you didn't say how much of the main pine trees are in trouble, and if you have to deal with those or not. Because the issue of the upper third actually sails through the wind across the road.
You're absolutely right, there was a number of trees that got blown over, there's like, in this past rainstorm we just had, and there's probably a half dozen more that are ready to go at any time.
Some of these, which is, which land they claim include removing trees that risk people's...
Those are things we'd have to ask, obviously, before, and we didn't today.
They need maintenance, right, at the sidewalk, we all had to move away, too, because we were all, we were all... Of course, coming out. A lot of work to be done in there.
By some reason, mine are compared to her major issues, so I'll wait for the rest of it, with her permission, I'll wait. With her permission, I'll wait for the rest.
You were a resident in Weston, you could still speak.
Oh, I don't know.
You were older than that. Now, what is your attendance?
Tell me when the show starts.
You can listen to everything she says.
Okay, so, uh, all right, so we will continue, and, obviously.
To June 5th, huh?
Oh, June the 5th, and I'm not sure, you know, we're going to throw it back in the laps, I'm not sure what, I don't have a to-do list here, because it's all over the place, so.
Absolutely, yes, that would be my advice.
I'd say, back to the drawing board, that would be my feeling.
Yeah, I mean, you've heard about the size, you've heard about the tightness, the walkout garage, and the, just, I mean, there's a lot of, we've told you a lot of stuff, but I think an architect should help you package it as something you could be happy with, and sell very happily.
It's a great, great opportunity.
Welcome, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you.
You've been thinking about it, Matt?
It's already ten, and I got Ricky outside, so I was just, I have Ricky outside, and she got her cell phone.
Oh.
I think that people can just, I think I'm back to your decision.
I wish, I wish I was still.
It might be. I would keep him here, I think we'll get to know him. We'll see, I'm moving, I'm moving to you on American first. No, 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 not right now. Yeah, it's, it's still-
Put the terrace.
Yeah, you, do you have a super eighty highlight, because it's, it's the pool, like? Okay, yeah. Okay, okay.
We're going to try our best to get out of here by 11:00 if we can. We're only, we're only a way down.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay, so eighty highlights. This is a pool and cabana addition, the site won last week. So we're just going to review this quickly. I think it's, not anything that's going to produce a major conversation. Who's going to do the presentation? Okay, go ahead.
I'll start. For the record, I'm Brian Nelson, Essential Architectureian. My left is Ruckis Place, he is a project architect and landscape architect, and to his left is Kevin Hapron, and I'm handing office. Uh, just to give a little history for the site. This was developed from a vacant lot back in 2011. We were the fourth planning boards in 2011 for the construction of the house, which is shown in brown, and that plan basically in the center of the lot. With that approval, there was a pool and pool terrace, no, that, those were located northeast of the house, basically in the lawn area, top right hand.
Brian, you have a laser pointer right over there if you want to use it.
Okay.
You can let the slides do that way.
Okay. So Highland Street's on the left-hand side of the plan, basically north going straight up the plan. Existing house is shown right in the center of the property, shown in brown, it's got a footprint of about 6,400 square feet. With this application, there are no modifications proposed to the exterior of the house. Same as that formal.
Great.
And, and there are presently, existing driveway comes in, basically the northerly side of the property is the loop driveway. Drive of the garage is in the front of the house, right there. Got three infiltration systems, first stormwater management, there's a system here which catches runoff from, basically, the westerly portion of the driveway. Another system just off the westerly side of the garage, and that catches runoff from a portion of the house in the driveway here. And a larger system up in here, and that catches runoff from the majority of the house and terrace areas out back. Existing septic system is located east or behind the house, in the lawn area there. Perimeter of the property is pretty heavily planted along the front. The northerly edge, there are some trees, that lawn area basically around the northerly side from the back of the house. Again, some more wooded areas on the easterly side and the southerly side as well. Then go to a different scale board, but basically this shows the northeasterly corner of the property, so this is a higher, a smaller scale. Existing house is shown, basically at the bottom left of this plan. What we're proposing is a pool with a footprint of about 1,100 square feet, and surrounding terrace, and again, these are basically in the same location as the approved plan. A cabana, which is right here with a footprint of about 250 or so square feet. Basically, citing the cabana and the terrace, existing infiltration system shown here, needs to be relocated to the west about 60 or so feet. Basically, same footprint, same size, but basically just being relocated to accommodate the new structures for the cabana and terrace. No modifications to the soil absorption system here. We will have a new pump chamber for the pool cabana that'll tie into the existing tank. Septic tank needs to be relocated as well. Elevations, there, there's a set of stairs right here that brings you down from, basically, elevation 270 or 269 around the back of the house. The pool terrace is sit at elevation approximately 264.5. So it's about a six-and-a-half foot drop, and that'll be accomplished through a set of stairs, then retaining wall running along the southerly side terrace. Basically, the terrace and cabana add approximately 2,400 square feet of impervious area in comparison to the plan that was approved back in 2011. So it's really a pretty small increase in impervious area. This section was accounted for, basically, in stormwater calculations with the initial submittal, and so there's no need to enlarge the infiltration system. Basically, there is no increase in the rates and volumes of runoff with the proposed improvements in place. That's a very quick pass through the civil part of it. I'm going to turn it over to Devin, and he can focus on landscape architecture and lighting.
Sure.
Uh, sure. As Brian said, I'm Devin Hapron, I'm a project landscape architect at County of Landscape Design.
If you scroll forward through it, you'll, you'll get to your drawings.
Great. So here's a overall site plan, showing the pool area up here. And we also are showing a little area here, which is new from the drawings that you guys had originally seen, just showing construction access that will need to do construction in the pool gardens area. The proposed tree removal plan is actually a tree transplant plan. This project proposes that we transplant all the existing trees that are in the way of proposed improvements, and we're using them both in ornamental capacity and then also in screening capacity. One thing I did want to note is that there's one cherry tree here, and thank you guys again for allowing us to start on transplants ahead of this hearing, but there's one cherry tree that actually had damage to it during the, I, what I have to assume is a previous installation, I have some photos here of that. And that, that tree's actually declined, so we're not going to transplant that one cherry tree because it's in poor health. Brian's kind of taken us all the way through the layout of the, the project, but just to kind of rehabulate quick. We've got a basement walkout from the existing house here that takes you up past the proposed pool cabana. We've got a sitting patio space under the overhead of the cabana. A swimming pool, a small patio space here. There is an in-ground spa that sits a few steps above the pool, and then the steps up to the existing patio space here. There is, of course, pool enclosure fencing. This is a wood and wire fence that runs across the top of the grade here. And then that same fence carries all the way down here, I'm sorry, it ends here. And then it becomes a black chain-length fence that's hidden inside of plant material and runs all the way across the back of the property over to here.
How tall is that fence?
Four feet. Uh, this is our lighting plan. Again, we're, we're using all Dark Skies compliant light fixtures. We have a set of, I'm going to jump ahead and I'll go back. We've got some kind of standard-style pathlights, some recessed wall light fixtures, and then we've got some pool and architectural lights, which I will point out as well. Pathlights generally are located for wayfinding. We've got recessed wall lights at the steps here and on either side of the spa. And then we've got, again, pathlights at the steps, along pathways. You all had given us some helpful feedback at the sidewalk about some, uh, I, actually, it may have been at the, at the intake meeting about some pathlights that we had along the, the lawn out here. We've actually taken all of those out and really kept all the pathlights around what we feel like is the, the main area where people will be circulating. We do have, sorry, I should also say, we've got, there are two architectural sconces, sorry, architectural fixtures that are under the overhang of the cabana. Both are set behind the rafters, inset, between the rafters, so they should be pretty well obscured. And then there is one sconce at the basement access, and that's the, kind of like gooseneck style, consistent with the fixtures that are already on site. Landscape planting, like I said, we've used, we've reused all of the large plant material that we found on site. We also intend, as I said on site, to save as much of the shrub and perennial material as possible. As you all saw, there's a fair amount of evergreen screen here. We have, we're actually proposing to transplant three evergreens. One is a hemlock, which sits out here. It's actually in front and kind of approaching on two spruce, so we're sliding that back into what I would consider the only real gap in that screening, kind of on the center line of the pool here. This is good for providing privacy for Carol, the neighbor two, to the northeast here. And then also, I think her driveway is kind of centered right on that space, so it'll help to obscure any headlights. We're using a largely native palette of plants, shrub material, and, and obviously, there's a, there's a fair amount of perennial and, and ground cover material that we'll be using as well. Here are some site sections, showing the cross-section through the property. As Brian pointed out earlier, there is a, the main grade change is as you step down from the house towards the pool area here, and then there's a lawn space, and then a small amount of grading that's required. There's about three feet of grade that needs to, to roll down here in order to provide the, the lawn space for the homeowners, grandkids. And that's all I have for landscape. Okay, over to Mark.
So there are a couple of minor changes to the house. I'll get those out of the way first, over.
Top one. Top one with the roof. There you go.
Well, that sets the light, but how do I move the, which is for, anyway, the screen and porch is over here. It's part of the RGFA, established RGFA. We're replacing the screens with sliding glass doors to make it a three-season as opposed to a two-season room. The cabana is a 220-square-foot structure that provides in the basement a place for the pool equipment. It's essentially a bathroom and a storage facility for, for furniture. It's a, a 11 feet, nine-and-a-half inches high. Outside, it has two recessed downlights, one over the dining room and one over the seating areas. And all the materials match the existing house.
Do you want to show elevations at all?
Eric, oh, was it? Was the difficulty as well? So it's, uh, yeah, so, we're, it's the same color scheme. We're using ornamented siding on either side. Behind, this is, these are two barn doors that slide apart to reveal a outdoor sink. This is the door to the ba, to the storage, the bathroom and the storage facilities on each side.
Okay, and the screen porch?
I think that is, I think we have drawings as well, Doc?
Yep.
So those are the elevations of the cabana. And so this is the screen and porch, so the exterior archivators are remaining, it's essentially the same. We're simply infilling this with painted steel sliding glass doors.
Okay, good. So we saw this all on the sidewalk. You really can't see anything that's, that they're proposing for any active area outside the site. So it's all sort of eternal. The possible exception of the bowling alley, but that's, I think they're, they're-
That's what I heard.
Infill planting there, so.
That's what's really speaking.
Either way. I know, I, I'm going to get to it. Just laying the background. I know. So Sue's asking me to get your opinion, Karen. You, you're the consultant for the planning board on this project, and what are your thoughts on, what's the proposal?
I, I think that they've done a nice plan, and, and I think the plans that they're choosing to go on with are their most major, and they're changing the space. The one concern that I mentioned at the, at the sidewalk was one, they were, there was an area that they were going to have to go through with, move, move through and to protect the tree roots, and I think that's in the rectangle there.
That's right.
Yeah, so. We have a plan. Putting pads down, isn't that part of it?
Yeah, we, we said that when the construction road goes in, that we use, uh, we use woodchips around the edges of the tree.
To, to have. Is that that better than putting down pads? Yeah, to keep the woods from being impacted. Right, there might, I think that the town might have a detail or-
We have the standards that, now, for tree protection.
For tree protection, so probably we follow that.
Yes.
That should be, that should be, and then I just make sure that when the trees are stored, that they're detailed.
Yeah, so all the, and I, I think we may have touched on a little bit. So all the trees that are being transplanted, we actually, we actually decided that a fair number of them could be transplanted and placed in advance of, of construction, so we've actually, we have either planted today or will plant tomorrow, I think, five of the trees in their final location. And then the remainers will be stockpiled in what we think are good nursery space, they're shady. And then, as you know, the property has an existing irrigation system, and so the plan is to pull a zone straight off of the irrigation system that's dedicated just for nursery space during construction. And as you might imagine, the plant material that lives in there is pretty expensive to replace, so it's a high priority for all of us.
Good, okay. Other questions for the boards, the board comments, anybody? Audience, comments, questions? Nope, in that case, we'll continue to look at, to review the draft decision to what date?
June 5th.
June 5th.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night.
Okay. Next up is 18 skating pond road. Ken, you're up.
Karen, you're in your consultant position into- Oh, yeah, yeah. Yes, you can raise the sign. We both keep that to anyone.
Okay, Jonathan, are you doing the presentation or what?
Very brief introduction. That would be Greg, on, on the change in the barn.
Okay.
Alan, Greg, the change in the barn.
Karen's moving over to the other side.
Quite unusual, like, say. Something of a green bunny dance.
Keep that in mind, Jay.
Yeah. You get a few points for being.
I don't wanna see that again.
We're trying to get out of here, but you don't want to.
Fire is, wait to see how much is gone down.
So Jake, can we try to hold this one to, you know, like fifteen minutes, ten minutes?
Ken, we don't need to.
Are you done, Jake?
Yeah.
Okay, that's great. All righty.
Just point to the screen, Jake.
I'm gonna have Greg and.
Yeah, please, go ahead. So we all know this is Eighteen Skating Pond. And the buyer has bought the house and they approved attached barn garage, four car garage. This is the, what was approved, the back elevation was a two story, there was a full walkout because of grading. And they've decided they don't, they don't need or want that. So what we're proposing is to shrink to a three car garage with no walkout on the back, which gives us the opportunity to bring the grade up and do more planting on top of the grade, which helps with noise from Route 20.
You saved this for Al's last meeting, right?
It looked like a garage.
In terms of the, the RGFA went down by a total of a few hundred square feet because we're, we are, there is a side porch, well, a side porch that we're enclosing, classing in because they have dogs, they want to be able to put the dogs in the glassed in porch instead of an older porch.
But the walkout wasn't included in the article.
Yeah, the, yeah, right, the walkout wasn't.
So it's actually a larger reduction.
From square foot.
Okay, so Jake, what are the implications for the sidewalk?
Yep, so we have, this is what, just go back on, this was the original, so you can kind of see, this is that we had the walkout on the backside, here's the pavement in the back. Here's the actual roadway coming through there, there's the patio area, the stairs and the retaining wall that was required for all that. So with this new change, as Greg mentioned, there's actually, you have a big benefit out of it because we can remove all that. And so we actually removed all the pavement that went down to the backside. And then, and then we were actually, we filled this area, so now Karen, that does the planting, I'm like, now they're all elevated. You have a whole area that's elevated, plenty of things to post it down in the lower section. So it actually is gonna close that area, and all we have left is a little footpath that goes up and around the property as opposed to having that pavement come around the back area.
Okay.
We do have a limited work change that's from, this originally, there was two trees that were in the section, and we were saving. And there's, there was three or four trees on this side over here. They actually came down during a storm. These trees fell, actually on the top of these trees.
Probably convenient.
We have pictures.
Approve it, right? No fingerprints, so.
And so that's why this grading's here now, to, you know, basically going through that area. So we were pulling the actual window work back. So our original window work is shown here. So it came across, saving these trees, saving those trees on that side, and then it went down along that driveway side. Here, what we do, we're pulling it in, we're still saving all the trees down below. But we wanted to have some, some little more area for open bounds over here, because it's all like the scrub lawn areas. So to utilize for some kind of stockpiles, that kind of stuff we needed temporarily. And then, basically, then for future, there's gonna be plantings that stop down in that area.
Actually, it's already done, isn't it?
There's some stockpiles that run up along that. And this, yeah, and this is.
It's already cleared now, I'd say.
Correct.
Yeah, and then.
This is, this is after the fact.
Well, this limit of work was discussed with, I think, between Ken and you, with Imai in December, I think it was. Just a little change on the lower lot, yeah.
So when we talked about it, what we talked about is he wanted to push the limit of work back in here. And we said we have to come back to the planning board for that. Meantime, like, clearing has gone on in this area here. And that's the one I brought to you folks a while back now, just to look at it. And when we looked at the original pictures, you know, there was stuff in there. I don't know what you would call it, but there were shrubs, you know, scrub plantings in there. So you want to come back and see, you know, what is this area going to look like and transition to? You know, so in the meantime, instead of this, what I had Ken do was just cut off his limit of work right here at the line, at the property line, so that it wouldn't, so that he wouldn't touch this area here and seal this off.
So what's gonna happen?
That's what I want them to tell us, what are you proposing for this area?
The property.
Is that the property?
It is, it's like a lot, yeah.
Oh, okay, all right. I remember coming and asking to move the line over, and I thought we said no to that.
At that point, you said no.
Right.
But doesn't matter now, because it's cleared.
How did that happen? Well, the trees fell on it.
No, it's just not, all trees fallen down, Karen. It just, it got cleared, you know, it did.
Yeah, but that's why it looks.
Yeah.
Can I speak, Ken Stevens? Imai and I met in early December. We walked the site, and this is, was just a undergrowth of, it was, we didn't take any significant, we didn't touch a significant tree, but with lots of vines going up the trees, and he gave me permission.
What?
You said, as long as we bring this here, I've got, all of my landscaping stuff was down here, so.
Yeah, you had that stockpile when we first did the visit, that was all there already.
Right, and that hasn't changed, it's still there. So when we walked the site, he said, just to make it easy, we'll put the limit of work here, so that shouldn't affect this property. This property is separate.
Yeah, it was the area I was concerned about, your limit of work was in here. Correct, and I told you that on site.
Here's where the limited work was, Imai, it went from this point here, if you can see,
Yeah.
around these four trees, back again, and there.
It's right below, it's on the board just below that one. It's already on the easel. There, that's where it was.
So this is, this is where, actually, this, these, so what happened, Al, in March sometime, Karen, when I called you, I was in Australia.
It was March 21st, I think, when we went.
These two trees toppled this way.
Ken, what's happened is the whole, the whole driveway width going all the way down, between the two orange lines or all the way down to Route 20, that's all wiped out now.
And when he, when he and I walked, he gave me the go ahead to move those lines.
Because, no, I did not. I said, there has to come back here to do that. And I said, if you want to knock fence off over here, what you didn't want to do was put fencing down here. So I said, just put fencing across here, so you don't touch any of this down here.
Misinterpretation, man, I'll tell you.
Sorry.
It's done now. So that's why I'm asking, what's gonna happen now? It's done.
With what?
The, the, the limit of clearing line has changed, and it's changed now. It's not proposing to wipe, and it's already wiped. So what's, what is the proposal? Right now, it's just open.
The new owners aren't gonna sell this lot, they want one contiguous lot.
Yeah, but right now, there's an open swath that goes all the way up to Route 20 to where the house is gonna be.
So this road is coming out?
Yeah, yeah, but there's a wide open, if you could go back to this.
Scar, the scar going up.
That's all open, Mike, Ken. There's, there's nothing, there's no screening there at all.
How about we let Karen show you what we're doing here, which is much more significant than a second lot that's never gonna be used down here? Can you do your piece, please? Jake, jump into this, this is preposterous.
What's preposterous? Wait, wait a minute. What's preposterous? What is preposterous about what we're saying? This got cleared without our even looking at it. What is it about it that's preposterous?
Is it undergrowth, is that, I have to come back to clear undergrowth at a site?
You had, you showed us, it was your drawing that we looked at and signed off on. If you wanted to make a change, you should have come back to us before you clear cut it.
I had the planner out there with me, okay, and we walked the entire site, Al. And the reason we did is because he wanted to go from a yellow tape, which wasn't significant enough, to a very expensive.
Why didn't you come back to the board before you clear cut it?
Because I thought I was handled with this name.
You know, it's not, it's not your first rodeo with us.
No, and that's why I got him out there.
And you got it out there because I told you that the yellow tape wasn't significant enough, and so your option was.
So now my question, we can't, we can't put it back. My question now is, what are you proposing to do? It's a clear cut all the way up to the, to the upper lot.
You want me to put it back? I'll put it back. The grass is being.
I'm just asking what's preposterous.
No, I'll put it back, Al.
What is preposterous? You said it's preposterous, what was preposterous about what we were doing?
Not what you're doing, the fact that I had the planner out there, on site, personally walked him through, and that was mine.
I must say, I really resent it that you described something that we're doing as preposterous.
It was my understanding that this was done.
This was your drawing that we certified. It was your drawing that we certified, you made changes without reviewing it. I don't see why that's preposterous.
He never told me to come back then, and I would have gladly.
I did tell you to come back then.
It's what, so now my question is. Man, my question for you now is, what are we going to do about it now? We have a clear pathway right up the center of the.
What I always remember, we all can agree that it was all lower, lower underbrush, shrubbery, it was, there's no, because we actually located all the significant trees on the property. They're all being saved, like, they're all still the same.
This was a lawn that was starting to grow up.
Exactly, so it's all, it's all lower shrubbery, that was actually, and weeds.
What is the proposal now, just to leave it open?
Right now, yes. And it's the, we don't, we're not proposing to bring back the.
It looks really bad.
Well, I think it's the, we can have, have a discussion about what potential we can put down there, but it's all gonna be lower, lower, low shrubs or metal grasses or something like that, because it's something that's, after this is done, there's not a lot of area that to get to there, because it's all gonna be, all this path is all removed. You got a footpath down there, it's not as if they're planning to maintain all this down there. So metal grass, it's that kind of stuff, it'd be something that could be thrown down there that actually will, you know, with the. Yeah, so it's something that's not gonna be fully maintained, and it's gonna be the same elevations that we're already there.
You're gonna let it grow back natural?
Yeah.
Do we have any issues as far as erosion? Because that's a fairly significant slope.
I might should take a look at it.
I think there might be a sidewalk to take a look. Because when you drive by, it looks like somebody's cutting to clear something, and yes, I know the piles will go, but it looks like.
It looks unfinished right now. It looks like somebody just whacked it open.
Yeah, and it always used to be a, you know, a background lot that, you know, you didn't really look at. Now, when you drive by, it's open, you look at it now, maybe that's fall, winter versus summer, but.
What about that proposal that's on the table? We do a sidewalk and we continue this to.
That might be the best thing to do, because right now, we don't really have a good feeling for this.
Can I suggest that Karen goes over what the change to this scene?
I don't think it's, I don't think it's gonna resolve anything tonight.
Well, it is for me, Tony, because I've been postponed on getting, John Field was gonna give me a foundation permit. Property's been sold, I'm under the calendar. John was gonna give me a foundation permit, we're not doing anything significant on the first lot with the main house.
But my message to you is, we're gonna do a sidewalk. So given that we're gonna do a sidewalk, why don't we just continue this, and we'll.
Let's just more time and.
I understand, but I think we've decided that. Can I, I understand the sidewalk, the question is, can he, can he start on the foundation of the house while we're waiting?
Which is irrelevant to what we're talking about.
About my decision.
We approved the rest of it already. Is the foundation for the original barn staying smaller, right?
It's kind of small, it's correct. So it's that, so the, I think, I think the board's like the changes, I mean, the footprint is changing the location.
It's what we approved before, only shrunk, so that's gotta be a good thing.
Right.
So is this the way I would like to do business? No, but I can see the pressure with this.
And the law really is to do with the other law.
Yes.
Not to do with this one.
Yeah, sounds reasonable to me.
Okay, Karen, go ahead.
Okay. I like the neighbors, not a fight, I've been watching out of control equipment out there for the last three months, clearing, all kinds of stuff going on all day long. I live right across the street from it, and that's the preposterous thing.
That was under the demo plan, taking the old house down? Yes.
I'm talking about the landscaping and the existing conditions on the hillside.
This is a, there's a silly point. This is two lots. If I'm really doing my work on lot number one, what of, do we really have to include lot two in the board's discussion? I, I'm sorry for the confusion.
We went through this.
No, I wasn't here for the presentation, I'm sorry.
Well, let me explain it, you're asking a question. We went through that in the, in the initial presentation, and it was agreed that we would combine the review of both lots because they're linked, because they're essentially together. And that was amenable to the people that made the presentation. So we are following, and in fact, we looked at a site plan that showed both lots from Jay, we signed off on both.
Yeah, fair enough, I wasn't here, sir.
So.
Fair enough.
Okay, go ahead, Karen.
So I'm just gonna reiterate, this is the original proposal. This is how the driveway went here, and we had this secondary driveway that went below for the lower level of the barn. And the barn located here was a two story building, and now it's a one story building, and it's one bay smaller, so we're gonna do it. All of these plantings out here have been approved and are maintained the same. And then what we're proposing to do now, that we have this option, this opportunity for elevating the map, is we're building up a buffer between the two, between the two lots, and between the new barn position and Route 20. And so there's a mixture of evergreen trees up in here, one birch that is connecting to the birches that we've already planted, so we're keeping the same kind of plant palette. And then because it's sloped, I have some lower shrubs that are gonna help, help to maintain the slope. When we, when we removed the lower driveway, it seemed like it would be an opportunity to keep a connection between the two lots, and, but this whole lower driveway is gonna be removed. So there is, there is some pavement down there now, so what you're seeing is that maybe it's scrubby and maybe it looks unused, but this is a kind of falling apart driveway that's gonna be removed. And what we're planning on doing is replacing it with a footpath that's not gonna be a painted footpath. It's gonna be either, you know, gravel or mulch or something, it's just a path so that there's access down to the lower, lower, um, lower area. And then what I picture is that when all of this, all of the construction material that's being stored there now is removed, that we just restore to a kind of a native meadow weed, low planting that kind of rejuvenates that and lets it go, let it go natural.
What's the elevation change in that mountain area behind there, between, it looks like there's, it seems like there's, you built it up, and like there's an earth wall, and then you go down low, is it like four feet or is it twelve?
It was like seven feet. Is it seven feet? Switch it over here.
Yeah, so the, right through there.
Sorry.
The, so it's actually, from here to there, it's actually, this eventually finishes down at 200, and it starts up here at 212. So the, what we're doing, what we're basically doing is the, using the elevation that was actually at the house that was originally there, and then just instead of using the retaining walls, we were just pulling the grade down to actually go, eventually naturalize what Karen was saying on that side.
What's the slope?
And then, and then actually fill in the back though, because before you were looking at the whole walkout side of the barn and then that, so now we're hiding that, no way to do that.
What's the slope?
It's, everything went out, it's about two and a half to one.
It's pretty steep.
Yes, just, just look.
What are you planting on the two and a half to one slope?
So there, so, let me, yes. There, there's a Ridgwick dogwood that is gonna colonize, that's, it's red osier dogwood. There's some piers, which are evergreen, so there's, so there's evergreen trees and there's the birch, those are for, you know, interest. And then there's piers, which is evergreen, and it's gonna have some red tinge in its leaves. And then there's the dogwood that's gonna kind of colonize the real steep part of the slope, and that's also red and electric. So try to get some interest in there as well. But those kind of things, they go by rhizome, so they, they.
You're gonna need some ground cover to start with, aren't you? Because it's, otherwise you're gonna, you're looking at an erosion problem, aren't you? Because it's, otherwise you're gonna, you're looking at an erosion problem, aren't you? In the two and a half to one slope?
So, so we might have to add some ground covering.
Yeah.
It might, it might be, and I, you know, again, there's so much going on tonight, which is unfortunate. But it looks sort of like it's all bounded around that one building. It might be more natural to the, to the second block. It's more of a, it fits more across the width of the, of the site itself, a lot of it sort of mounding up to the one building. You know how that always looks like in its own plant of some sort, something that, that zig, whether, whether you spread it out more, whether you let it go down a little farther. It's a little bit, it's a little bit like the reservoir, you know? Mounded up to one special place. So I think that's something you should just consider. Because when you look from the, from that road up there, it's gonna be up, you need, it, it's...
You can grade it up, Karen, because the property line is, is further down the hill.
So grade it a little bit more and push, and push the path.
More gently. And then you won't need your binca and you'll be able to, and push the path out a little bit. Would you do that, Jay? A little more space.
It's a good idea.
It was a good idea, yeah.
So...
It could just be...
Quite so, which is a reservoir.
Yeah.
So she can get his foundation permit. Are we saying that it's, that with that condition, that the contours be spread out further down the hill, that you guys are okay with, with signing off on this proposed change?
Just the foundation could be the one and two.
Contingent on, on what happens on the, on the rest of the site down the hill? Is that, is that where people are?
That will be a condition, Josh.
Yeah.
We have to have a sidewalk.
We'll have a sidewalk and we'll add the details about what happens to repair the hole.
But in the meantime, what we're saying is that we're gonna swing this path.
Can you bring it back this way? I'm sorry. I can, I can see some of it, but...
Okay. So what I'm understanding that you're saying is that we're gonna swing this path down a little bit. Because it, what it was following up here and what went through here was the old driveway. So what, what we did was we swung along this ledge where the trees came down and it went across site to, to just use the old driveway as the pathway.
And the property line's down here up here, and so it could come further down.
Yes, we're, we're trying to take the, the, the onus off this barn slope.
Okay, so what you're saying is we'll take the path and swing it down more like this, across, like across here. And then we can spread this out and spread the plant out a little bit, spread the farm out.
Yeah, to me, to me, the instigator is making the slope more natural and more across the side gentle. Right, and then after you do that, then you can figure out where the path is.
That's artificial.
Yeah, less of a mound, exactly.
Do you guys wanna see that though in another plan and wait on that?
If you can do that and send that to us, so we can take a look at it, because, you know, as we get, as we look at it before the decision and before the walk, that could help.
Well...
It doesn't affect the foundation.
Yeah.
No, it doesn't affect the foundation, no.
So, yeah, so we'll, we'll sign off on the foundation permit, but that's something you guys wanna see again before. So I think the only change that we're signing off on right now, even though they're kind of related, is the change to the house and its foundation. The grading, you're, we're still not signing off on because that has to be, that has to, you guys wanna see that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It's just the barn that changes.
I mean, I think you have it because of the...
Well, yeah, that's what, yeah, the barn.
That's where all by the book.
When do, when do we think the sidewalk will be? Because we could bring the, we could regrade that and short it at the sidewalk.
Um, the next available time I think we have for our sidewalk is the 21st.
You've got your permit for the foundation.
Yeah.
We shouldn't care.
So we could bring the, we could bring the grade plan with it.
Oh, and can we make sure that nothing else gets cut on the second side, nothing else gets touched?
Karen, we're, we're, we're...
Okay, don't move any, don't move any piles, don't do any of that, okay?
Yeah, please. Thank you.
Do not have to.
Okay. Good enough.
Did we say that at 15 minutes?
No.
So I'll send, I'll, I'll cook from the sidewalk when we can do it. The A and R has been postponed because they needed to make changes.
Oh my god.
A decisions.
We hold up...
Decisions.
Yeah, can we go to the...
Can we go to the meeting matter?
Let's go to, let's go to 518.
The most, yeah, that's the most important thing for tonight.
Do you people have a copy of this, do you mind?
Yeah.
Just send it along right now.
Uh, don't worry about the size of it. Most of it is all reference materials, just the first 12 pages, but I attached...
It's like a photo.
Yes.
I mean, your resonance.
It, it was online. It's online, just like with, with everything else that's on our meeting folder.
Where does the real stuff start?
The first two pages.
This is due to the board's selection.
Tomorrow. So that's why we have to review this tonight.
What time tomorrow?
You know, I'm thinking, they did say, but I think close the business because they're, they're gonna compile it to like a meeting the other day.
You might, I don't think people are gonna be able to get through...
Yeah.
Even the, the stuff that you've written, there's like eight pages worth of stuff here. You wanna give it a shot?
Yes.
You wanna give it a shot? Okay.
At least, at least the beginning part, that's neither matter.
Yeah, I mean, if there's anything to get through, really, it's the comments, the policies and preferences, kind of like we did with 751. You guys can email me changes on that because that's really supporting. So if there's anything really to say tonight, let's say it about, you know, the first four really pages.
So are we doing 500 walls yesterday right now?
No.
No.
Oh, sorry.
It was postponed, they didn't have...
So we're just starting with the general recommendations, right?
Comments on 518 for the project eligibility phase. Could people who are here for 518, South Avenue, raise, raise your hand? Everybody in the back of the room, would, would you guys care to come up to the front of the room or are you comfortable sitting 30 feet away from us? What we're doing now is reviewing planning board's comments on the proposed 275 unit project. And just, I don't know, if you, if any of you have seen a copy of the comments, these, these are the planning board comments alone on the, on the project, right here. So, we have a few.
Are those online right now?
Yes, they are.
We're just, what we're doing is we're...
You don't have an extra paper copy, do you?
I don't have an extra paper copy.
You can have it.
Well, what? You know what?
Oh, wait a second.
No, sorry, you have already read it.
We can run prints.
No, we're good. Don't suck, don't...
Okay.
So we're gonna be voting on this tonight.
Karen, I'll give somebody mine too.
Listen, I have the supporting stuff, I'll do my edits on this thing.
We want to research to found all the similar criteria.
So... Tell me, tell me, tell me. How do you do it? Over a 10-year period? This is four.
Four. And you found them all and they were all to do with exactly this?
Uh, three of the four.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
You did that as part of the 255.
I can't say.
No, no, you can't say.
Can't say.
No.
Need a confirmant. Sorry.
No, that's all right. Okay, hit the left. All right, so, what do you think? Well, it says, we just might have to take it to meet for one. Also, you can't take your stake in the present one, Mark. I've got my two-year old classes.
Oh.
I think Orion, uh...
Someone they're gonna down $900,000.
They're downed?
Well, we voted on their, on the town meeting. He voted for it.
Denied. So denied. Okay, you, you gotta like, you say and.
Where, where are we?
You say pay $100,000.
Oh, and land.
Yes, which recently was given and, and downed.
Oh, okay.
If the energy, if that hundred needed use...
Just a typo, I do, that's all. Gotcha.
So we, we still need more if one of four doesn't go, or without saying doesn't. So we could deal with this if we have a hundred units. I mean, I, if I wouldn't have housing, I'd say we still need a hundred. We're a set job. Okay, well, I wasn't sure how this, I mean, to me, I, to me, that's, when I was saying this is better and I agree with you, I go, well, if you, if you've done these things, where are you? We've broken the rotation, we're 95 short. So that would be my question, whether that's...
Well, I don't think you're trying to look at it, you're not, uh, permanent.
Can we, can we have some silence, please?
Well, I don't have the perception. Everybody started all flashing the lights here. I'm like, it's too late. Building, what time is at 12:00 to flash the lights?
Eva, where on the website is it?
Should be. If you go to, let me just go back over here. Oh, that's my. I'm amazed link up here. So, here, if we do this. Open folder for this meeting. Five eighteen thousand. There it is. Open up the agenda for this meeting. Online. And then at the bottom, there's a link to the, to the meeting folder for this. The very last link on it. If you open up that, it'll.
It's the panel there right there.
Yeah. But I also have it up just on.
Back up here.
Sure.
Depends whether we're supposed to be looking at this.
No, I mean, if you discuss, please.
We're supposed to be looking at the table or?
I would say that, for the sake of time, I would forego looking at the tables. If you have any comments, send them to me. Um, you know, we did that with seven fifty-one, but really, it's the, it's the comment.
First page is the.
Yeah, it's the first four pages that are really.
Well, unless, unless.
Okay, well, I'm ready to discuss that.
I think, I mean, I'll, I'll. Go ahead. Can I get that too?
Yeah, you can ask. Sure.
So can I, uh, my comments?
Yeah, so let's go, let's just go briefly.
I'm not going to talk about any of the punctuation comments. Um, the paragraph under conceptual project is not generally appropriate. That should be floor area ratio.
Oh, ratio.
Not ration. And then, a little further down, it says supportive, this calculation will consider the finding to be conservative. Conservative could either be high or low, depending on how you interpret it. So I would say understated.
Okay.
Moving on, on the next page, second paragraph under Medfield Meadows, as we discussed, you need to make that clear, that's still referring to Medfield Meadows.
Yeah.
And not to the project. The very last sentence on that page should be, this project has been supported.
Wait, wait, you're going too fast for. He's trying to type it in while you're talking.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't have my, um, my. Oh, is it back up there? Okay, cool.
I'm also going to give this to you.
Okay, cool. Then, no problem, why? Why, it's hand filmed.
It's early in the evening, you could, you could do all this later on.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from you.
Yeah, yeah, we will have a second.
Okay, so, um, and the only thing I want to say, because the rest of it's typos and what have you, is the, is the first paragraph at the top of the third page, where you talk about how you're comparing it to, uh, seven fifty-one to seven sixty-one, plus and plus road. I think you should add what the FAR is for that project. Since you have indicated what the FAR is for this project.
Okay.
That's all I have to say.
Oh, yeah. It was like point one eight. I knocked it out today, so, yeah.
Okay.
So I do, no.
There you go.
It was that, it was that, is that low?
Yeah, because it's, it's a smaller project and it's on a way bigger site, yeah.
So, any comments?
I, I.
And it's you?
The board of selectmen has to, oh, you got them led. Board of selectmen has to turn this in when?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Well, we have to turn it into a board of selectmen tomorrow.
When does the board of selectmen have to submit?
I think it's the.
The ninth.
Okay, so that gives.
So they process this.
Do a little time to maybe do any little.
Well, we're gonna.
No, no, we're down tomorrow.
We're gonna do the final edit.
The final edits, right. But, um, I like it because it was pretty succinct for all three pages and it just, it gave really meaty, um, good consideration. For, for, and, you know, the board of selectmen's not going to go through all this.
That's how they.
Right, but the board of selectmen needs these first three pages, so I think great job.
Yeah.
Eva.
A second question.
Uh, I wanted to talk briefly, I think, about modular construction.
Yeah.
It's a small site, it's a lot of building, it's right now, I think, between two years plus to build it the way they have it now at two hundred and seventy-five. I don't know whether that reduces or not. If you do modular construction, a lot of construction is done elsewhere than factory.
That's right.
You don't have people hammering, bringing in labor, bringing in materials, taking out debris, all the rest of it. You have people over a two-month period with the crane, picking up the units and putting them in place. Um, you will still have tree cutting, you will still have earth moving, et cetera, but you won't have, all, all of that giant influx of the workers, their cars, um, materials, all of that won't be happening in the neighborhood, it will be happening somewhere else in factory.
Except for the parking garage.
Except for the parking garage. Well, that they can deal with that.
But even that's prefab.
Right. So, I'm thinking we might request, ask, demand, whatever word we can use, that they consider quite seriously in this early stage, which means time to do it. Modular construction, you can build five stories out of wood. And that seems to be the area we're talking about. Um, you can build, um, nowadays, with a little bit of ingenuity, you can build pretty appealing, um, rental apartments. They're doing it in, uh, in Charlestown, I believe, in a place called The Graphic. Um, so there is precedent for this. I mean, it's, it's a silver lining, but it might help the neighborhood. I mean, we're still going to end up with this many units, et cetera, et cetera, and trees, but it's some, so I bring this up now, if we include it now, they have a chance to do it. And if they don't take advantage of it, well, when they start doing laydown and site coordination and management, it's their issue.
So, whatever you're talking about there, could you make a paragraph out of it?
Yes.
Sure. I mean, we can add that to the back of the.
Okay.
Well, I would suggest we put it in the criteria. We have minimized conflict, so.
Good answer.
So.
And I'd like us to, I'll again, the, sorry, one last thing, I'd like the construction, um, plan and strategy.
Okay.
Okay, so we put that in the criteria.
Yeah, in fact, we have that in the criteria right now.
Yeah. Okay. Yes.
Yeah, in, in, in connection with what Les is saying, that modular company must be in Massachusetts and must meet our building code. It cannot be in New Hampshire or any other region. And you well know that because you were an expert with us at Sienna Village.
On a modular construction.
Well, we'll have to do some talking because I thought if you could, as long as you have inspectors from Massachusetts and use Massachusetts certified fixtures, et cetera. But that's a nuance.
Yeah, yeah, it's a nuance, but be very careful what we're talking about.
I mean.
It's doable.
We're getting down into the.
Yeah, like we're gonna do it.
It's not real.
Yeah. Right, that's.
Kind of like.
For us, they're.
Right, for us, we're just trying to like. Take this from there.
All right, any other comments for anybody? Tony, you good?
Uh, I'm good. I'm going to add some meat to the argument. If it's reduced to from two hundred to two hundred, it needs to go through a whole turnaround. A new project helps right.
Okay, so can I add language to that?
Not a little bit of language, though, yeah, make references to state law, state regulations.
Okay.
You?
A little more.
A little more?
I'm not even going to.
Exactly. Of course, of course.
Did I read a lot about environmental or health issues in there? Wetlands?
No, there's not a lot of talk about wetlands in here, environmental. Um, I usually, I relied on mostly the, I relied on the decisions you provided me. And those were, those were primarily about site appropriateness and.
I'm not saying it isn't.
Yeah.
But, um, I just know that the major reasons for denial are health and safety, so.
Oh, okay.
More health and safety, we can build into our argument, the better.
Okay.
If, if we know of testimony, if we know of testimony.
Right, and there is some stuff we can talk about.
All right.
Just a question about the environmental issues, they haven't clearly raised any of those stuff, right, because now, now. Upland.
You mean at Concom?
Yeah, I mean, those are issues that have been brought. Has that, the only thing they did do last night at Concom was they basically said they wanted permission to, um, the flat, basically, the wetlands are where they said they are.
Yeah, it was a wetland delineation during last night.
There is concern about the driveway and the, the no build zone and all that other stuff, so. I think we need to allude to it and the Concom can do that as well.
Right, right.
Can I ask one more question and then I'll be really quiet? What did they say about the fire driveway? The, the one that was for life safety, the fire?
One that goes through the wetlands?
Yeah, it's gotta be.
They carefully did not discuss that.
That's gotta be twenty-two feet wide.
I understand that, but that wasn't what they were saying yesterday. What they were saying yesterday, they were not doing what we're doing, which is putting on conditions. All they did was said that we are agreeing that the wetlands line is where the two experts, one that the town hired and the one that the developer hired, is where they said it is. That's all they wanted to establish.
And they didn't touch on.
Ordinarily clear about that.
You know, I, you know.
I know, and they would not take discussion on it, and they were adamant.
Why?
Wasn't it, they, because they kept saying it was only the, and red, um, was the topic, only topic. I don't know when they're putting together their comments. Hmm, that don't come up.
Um, you had a chance to read it briefly.
Yeah, no. I appreciate you guys taking into, into your comments, the neighbors' concerns, I really appreciate it. It's the best you could do. See what happens with the project, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else's comments at all? We realize you've just had a chance to see it tonight, so if you have any comments, yes, sir.
Do you know why they rescinded the two hundred? I'd like to meet with you again. I saw that in your comment letter. Did they give you any explanation why?
No, they just said they don't want to do it.
There, um, there was, to let you guys know, there was a letter back from Mass Housing. We had a letter to them, you were at the meeting, the meeting had a large audience.
Yes.
Uh, we were arguing that they had filed for two seventy-five in the middle of this meeting and said, I need two hundred as well. And we argued that, hey, if we're going to review two hundred, we need to see documentation on two hundred. And then they agreed to provide that documentation, said we're going to need a meeting for two hundred as well. And they said, we'll have a meeting. And then they rescinded that offer. Uh, and then we made a statement back to them, and I believe she's in Mass Housing, that said, hey, it's our opinion that this is crazy. Um, this lawyer is telling us, we got a presentation for four, for two hundred. That's what their statement said was written. Said, you didn't really get a presentation on two seventy-five. That presentation you got was for two hundred. And we said, who's, you know, smoking wow, this is crazy. So, Mass Housing got a hold of our response and clarified that response they want from the town is not for a proposal of two hundred, it's for two seventy-five. So Mass Housing made that clear. So that's.
So that's what we're responding to, the two hundred and seventy-five unit proposal. We, our position is that if it's, if it goes to two hundred, it needs to be a completely different, um, filing application.
Thank you.
So, if, if you think about it, if it's accepted that they can file for something higher and then come back at, at something lower arbitrarily, you could just go into any town and say, I want to build a thousand units, and then come back and say, oh, turns out less than a thousand, how about three hundred and fifty? You know, and no one's ever had a chance to evaluate with three hundred and fifty.
It's true.
That was our argument.
I'm sorry, you, you.
Isn't it, in a town this size, don't they, uh, limit?
They camera, I recognize the camera name.
Don't they limit it to two hundred anyway?
They do, correct.
Large project.
So, two seventy-five is just rejected on.
Right. But that's all they've given us information.
That's right. That's what, that's what they have on the table now, of course. The way it works, we have, we have to go through the process. And the process is, they've submitted two seventy-five. It gets an eligibility letter, it goes to, it goes to the zoning board of appeals. The zoning board of appeals says we're not going to accept it. So that's the, that's the way that works. And then, our position is, they then have to come back with a two hundred unit proposal.
Right.
With all the information to get.
They can't override two hundred.
No.
They can propose it, the town can accept it, or the town can reject it.
No.
Where it gets rejected is at the CBA. So they present this two hundred and seventy-five unit proposal, and the zoning board of appeals says, no, we reject it because it's a large project, uh, safe harbor. And then, our position is, you come back with a two, a different two hundred unit. We're, our schedule is, we have to submit the, the town's response to eligibility application by the ninth. And then it goes to Mass Housing. And that's a black hole, so nobody, if they take whatever time they, they take to issue the letter of what's called an appeal, could be a month, could be six weeks, perhaps.
So, just in the short term, what I'm worried about is, uh, they go back to Mass Housing, and Mass Housing said, you're not going to get a book for two seventy-five that's going to clear it. They say, but since we applied already for two seventy-five, how about two hundred for a comprehensive permit, which is the next step? So, we want to make clear to Mass Housing that we will not accept that. That project eligibility for two seventy-five, we will not accept that as a legitimate appeal process for a comprehensive permit for two hundred. So I want the town to be of one voice with that. I want the planning board to understand that, I think we all do. Board of selectmen now are beginning to understand that, I think that changed in the last couple of weeks, and agree to it. And I want neighbors to feel that. And Mass Housing to feel that as well.
The key is, Mass Housing has to actually continue to look at this as a two hundred and seventy-five unit.
Exactly.
And not a swisheroo.
Exactly.
Sort of behind the scenes.
Can, can they stand construction, construction at all?
They don't have any permit.
Well, I saw trucks moving today.
I mean, they can do things like soil test and things like that.
They can't even take down the houses, though, can they?
I think they have the demo.
They do have a demo permit?
With a house in there.
We need to find that out.
You called, not today, right?
Yeah. You did?
They have the demo.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you guys, thanks a lot. Really shake off what you're doing. Thank you.
Last night, twenty-two years of this.
Twenty-two years.
Twenty-two years.
Planning board is not running for reelection. Many of those years he was chairman, so.
So I missed time.
It's hugely.
It might be a return.
Energy subject.
The whole town has thirty days to come on.
Thank you.
Good night all.
I might, and to recap, we should look at the decisions, because we put them off once already. If, if there's only one, if we can only get through one, get through one, marry him, so that, you know, Dana can at least close that one up. And we don't have to keep.
The camp in the two hundred metal brook area is quick.
One hundred metal brooks is quick.
Yeah, so let's just see this.
Okay. Oh, you've got, Dana's got Marion. Yeah, the one thing we talked about with Rick Olson, who's actually here tonight, he left early, I guess. He was moving the septic system, so I was gonna ask, see what we could do to save a couple trees. Well, he, he had two lands that.
All right, he had to, that took two, Wendy, and get, and run it by her, so.
Okay, so the one on the right is the change, right?
Well, the one on the left is what, what he suggested. But that, actually, is in violation of some code I have here. Well, you said it's in violation of. Title five, I assume?
Line.
But it's not titled five. We didn't really go into an explanation about that. I was hoping you'd be here to explain a little bit about that. The one on the right switches it the opposite way, that would need more soil testing. So, that's the only valid option.
Is it too close to, to a?
Well, the one on the right, he says by four.
The one on the right, they have to go back and do soil testing.
But wait a second, does that take down fewer trees, or does it take down more? Looks like it's actually more up into the site.
Don't, so either, both of these, these three trees that we see here, the ones that are being saved from. I can see.
Oh, with the rotation, they're saved, I see.
Oh, sorry.
So, we were saving three trees, listen. I guess the word is that both save the three trees.
These are the main ones we were discussing.
And how big are they? I can't see.
Um, what, pine twelve inch, and then, R O, I forgot what that's called.
Red oak.
Red oak, ten inch. Or ten foot, excuse me.
So, if, if.
Ten inch.
And you said, and this is the one they have to be tested for?
Majority of the septic field is outside of the approved area, so they have to do more soil testings.
Why does the other one not work?
Title five, I'm not sure.
Can you go back to the other one?
Yeah.
Because I can't see that it's any closer to the house or anything else than the other one they're closing.
Yeah, it looks like in the bottom.
Yeah, so I don't see, I mean, it's the same distance. Both of them have, its point seems to be as close to the house as the one they like, or say they have to do more soil testing for, so I don't understand.
Looks like this one's.
Yeah, that may be it.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, just the general title five said no, doesn't. Yeah, I mean, this one here is closer to its bottom line than this one.
Right.
So, what the heck? I don't get it.
Maybe it's.
And then, I don't know if you guys wanna have them go back to the condition, but Dave did suggest to me that you could even just have them replant a couple trees in that area if they have to take it down. Now, I did my own inspected work, I don't know if this is still approved, but if you really move this field down like two feet, you save this top tree right there, and if you move down like a couple extra feet, you save right here, it's still above this low point.
Yeah, so there's a little other.
I mean, I would have liked to have had the discussion with Rick if he was here, but I'm thinking there's more options than having him go back this way and have the soil testing.
I saw him, he was here earlier.
Yeah, he left around right before the.
I mean, I.
Couple discussions.
Yeah, the lights are going out here in thirty-five minutes. Yeah, right.
Can we vote on the comments?
No.
Do we have to?
Well, wait a minute, let's do that after we get finished with this.
Right.
So, where are we on this? This is.
Up in here.
What the area of street.
So, two options is the one we showed here, and then maybe just leaving it as is, taking that tree down and replacing it.
Well, are those the only options, because you just said.
Well, I just created my own suggestion, I don't know if that applies to the title fives.
To be.
Yeah. You're allowed to pick one. You're allowed to be educated as to why that's not.
Yeah, I mean, I did my own gurness of the, the trees here, and you really move down four feet, you save both those trees.
So, I would say we're not ready to. Change, until we.
But I'm not a Stonewater guy, so I'm not sure about the.
That's okay, but that's, that's how you learn.
Yeah. So, I can ask Dave, and I can use Courtney and Dirk again. And I guess we'll have to continue this decision again to the next meeting.
Yeah, and, and the general refusal of, it's title five, that doesn't mean anything, because we don't know.
Yeah.
So, we just like the specific, it's two, you know, it has to be within six inches of the line, just like they, they were saying tonight.
Is, is, this is gonna have to be reviewed anyway by the board of health, has anybody read this by the board of health yet?
We were expecting Rick to, we have it.
Well, yeah, they said for option two, they do require additional soil testing approval from the board of health. So, they're hoping that we get this approved with the condition that they do soil testing the board of health after.
They need to get back to us and tell us why the first one is right.
Okay.
What, what was the refusal?
You like the first one better, because why?
Well, they're telling us that with, with that one, you don't have to go back and do more soil testing. You know, and I, I was trying not to make, have to do additional work. I thought it was just a rotation, because the thing about that rectangle, it included two test pits, you know, and within the, within the vein, within the new area, so I don't. So, exactly. It's late.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so that one gets put off.
Okay. So, we'll go to the next meeting, again on the fifteenth.
What about the fidelity house day camp? That's.
That should be pretty easy, right?
And the hundred metal brook should be pretty easy too, which is.
Hundred metal brook didn't have a lot, yeah.
Hundred metal brook.
Isn't that just a memo?
No. No, that's a full site plan approval. Even though it's an existing house, because that's an existing house that never went through the original site plan, first checked and approved. It's a, it's a five ninety-nine, no, actually, it's a seven thousand that never went through.
Drop off and pickup will be by a seventy-seven passenger bus, not seventy-five. Not eighty.
That is what he said, that is what he said, it's a seventy-seven passenger bus.
So, I remember that one.
Number seven appendix B, is that any increase? An increase in, something weird there. The applicant should inform the planning board of an increase in by greater, so either in comes out, but increase by greater than a hundred percent?
Exactly.
What about just neither one of them? An increase greater than one hundred percent?
And a hundred percent actually seems really high.
I'll say.
Don't you want to say something like?
Fifty percent?
Twenty-five percent?
I think I was going off another decision to do that.
Twenty-five percent.
I think we should do fifty.
We do fifty, yeah, we never allow a, a doubling of size.
Three hundred percent.
Yes. You can go to whole D. There we go.
Yeah, we're ready to. Ready to approve it?
Yeah.
I move that we approve the certificate of action for the fidelity house day camp with the modification noted.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Not opposed?
All right.
All right, we have for one hundred, it's a full scale. Full scale site plan. Review decision.
I guess we're gonna do it.
Yes, we're gonna do it.
Yes, in our way.
Everybody's nodding.
Yeah.
We're very good now.
This is one hundred metal brook. Could you click on one hundred metal brook? You might just had it.
Yeah.
On the screen.
Yeah. What do you wanna see on it?
What it looks like.
Ah. So, we go to an elevation?
Yeah, keep going. Why? This one.
Things we got solved. There's someone by Phyllis.
They came before.
Yeah. I, I missed the.
Yeah, I think you missed the.
This is the one by Phyllis, isn't it?
No, this is one hundred metal.
Phyllis lives on Lording Road, and it's the first house where the kids all go to birthday parties and limos.
It, it was an early Ken Stevens house.
It was a what?
Early Ken.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so it's not next to Phyllis.
No.
It's different.
Is this the one where they're redoing the backyard in order to have a play area?
Yeah, they're putting a couple of retaining walls in the backyard, basically.
So, this is, this is the one where basically the front of the house is staying, is saying, the back where there is a small basketball court is being moved and enlarged. Cutting into this slope in order to put a retaining wall, get more flat air, because right now it goes up. There's a hump in the middle to the right, which has a couple of trees. It's getting, it's getting turned into more of a flat playing area. They're, they're not that close to anybody. They are replacing most of the trees with similar, everything is.
Our better.
That's a good synopsis lesson.
You were reading that, or?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, exactly.
Sounded like a book reading.
It's tired.
Sounded like a, a tape recorder.
Yeah.
You should always be tired.
Uh, no, thank you. No, no, that would not be a good thing. That's right, they're, they're adding something to the left which falls across.
Right. That's, that's what I. Yeah, there's a couple of rear elevations, you know.
I think you're adding a screen.
Was that the drawing was from the, of the front elevation, which of course means nothing from this perspective.
Ooh, it's a fresh one, this Susan K.
This is where we'll be careful.
Right.
This was, this was couple off the, any kind of this. This, same. This is metal, this is metal, this kind.
Oh.
This was, the template was high.
Oh, I was gonna say, because wow. Okay.
Everybody ready? Yep, go forward.
Yeah.
So, item one B, why is it a good thing that they're removing additional ten trees?
Yeah, exactly.
I don't get that.
Item one B.
Says small ornamental trees were suffered from the pantry near to the house, and then it says the purpose is to remove additional ten trees, why is that preserving natural?
It's counter to it.
Features.
Okay, it's. Because.
Yeah, they're only nine trees.
Yeah, I guess that was the point, that it's, it's only nine?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the real point is that the, most of the mature trees are staying.
Yeah, that's, that's the point.
Are in bad shape, and they are replacing them on a one-to-one basis, it's not wonderful, but.
Yeah.
Where, where does it say that?
That's, that's what she recalled.
She's summarizing, it's a neutral.
But it did say one-to-one somewhere.
It's in the second page, it doesn't.
Yeah, but one, under screen objection, features. So, so then that's kind of a contradiction to what's in one B.
Okay.
Something to work on.
Okay.
Can we, can we go back to site one eight on the site sensitivity?
Right, proposed minor addition, because it's like a hundred square feet or fifty square feet, isn't it?
Okay.
It's like a bulkhead.
All right, well, the change in the bedroom.
Yeah, they're expanding the kitchen.
It's very minor.
We should get square footage if you can.
I thought it was more than a closet, that's.
Aren't there like two minor additions?
There's a, there's a kitchen, there's a kitchen something, but on the left, which is closest to the property line, it's a smaller addition. Yeah, if you, because it really is, it's small stuff.
Okay.
It should be.
Plural? I think it should be plural. Yeah, minor additions.
Yeah, minor addition.
Okay.
I think that's it, we know Highland should be metal brook.
Yeah, our program.
Yeah, Highland's, well.
I've marked that up.
Well, wait a minute, no, it's not just Highland should be metal brook, it's also, they're discussing with.
Either creating.
Just marking in the, in the curve in the road.
Did they actually do that?
So. I don't, I have, I don't think there is, I think this comes for baby Highland.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, a double cut driveway, that one hundred metal.
So, is that true?
Where we're looking at?
Number five on page six.
I didn't think they were doing anything to the driveway.
I didn't either.
That's what they're saying.
Okay, and as far as.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's, that should be taken out.
So, they aren't doing anything.
There's nothing there.
That's, that's.
They, I agree.
The Highland.
Right, and, and under, under town services about the irrigation well, I thought they had one.
They said they were gonna irrigate by well.
I, I thought they already had one, and they weren't, they were either gonna not increase the number of heads.
No, this one, this one doesn't have a well, they're gonna put one in.
Okay, then can we say they probably will put one in instead of proposed? As, as agreed to.
Okay.
Where is that?
Four.
Four, C.
The applicant has proposed irrigation.
Yeah. So, Will and Saul?
Yeah, redo whatever.
Okay.
Okay, someone wanna make a motion?
I move that we accept what the revision we just made, the.
COA.
The state of town, yeah, COA for one hundred metal brook.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed?
Outstanding.
Then let's repair.
Second, you wanna approve the comments? We approve the comments?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I move that we approve the forty B project eligibility comments for fifteen, five eighteen, so that.
As well, once.
With, with the modifications.
Which will be fourth coming.
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, only thing I gotta tell you guys about.
Okay, only thing I got to tell you guys about that is, I didn't get those minutes out.
Yeah.
The license license.
Seventh, um, on May seventh, we have a fi- site visit at 56 Cart Path. And our, the 44 Oak site visit has been scheduled for the fourteenth.
Forty, 56 Cart Path?
Yeah.
Sixty-three, sixty-three is the larger, right?
Yes.
So here's sixty-three, 56 is to the left, if you look at sixty-three, it must be.
Well, it's behind you, so I don't know now, don't turn around.
I'll deal with it, never mind.
Somebody needs to.
What's that?
I move that we adjourn and say.
Oh, yeah, you know, well, I love when Bradford is the one person.
I adjourn at eleven forty AM.
Aye.